Did you grab yourself?
I passed.
Excuse me, please. I represent and we're on the agenda.
You want to find another shoe?
I'll just put down the blue sound, not the brown.
I'm like rotary. We were here at six o'clock. Nothing comes to you.
You sent me the picture of me and Chase.
Wow.
Good luck tomorrow, alright?
Good luck tomorrow, alright?
Okay, okay.
Thank you.
I'm like rotary. We were here at six o'clock. Nothing comes to you.
You sent me the picture of me and Chase.
Wow.
I love it.
I don't know where she put the awards.
So I'll give them their two things.
President of the year.
Um, yeah, you know what? For the Employee of the Year, for sure. Because Schnack is really from the city. We're just doing a nice thing for him. You can certainly give him a Schnack as well. Mine's very short. And then for the Employee of the Year, it happens to be our President of Team Sergeant. He has no idea. And he's a very humble guy. He's gonna escape exactly. Steve Honduras, really a very sought-after guy. I'm actually hoping that this kinda keeps him in a district. Oh yeah, he's fantastic. So, but anyway, yeah, if you want, that's fine. We can congratulate him. I can give him the award to give him. That's fine. That's fine. I'm just gonna say some of the things his team accomplished in the last year with his leadership. Alright? So I'm gonna skip with Shimon. Let me try to know where these awards are.
Ladies and gentlemen, if we could have everybody take their seats, please.
If we could have everyone take your seats, please.
I'd like to call to order the regular City Commission meeting for Tuesday, February 19th, 2019, at seven o'clock. We have roll call, please.
Commissioner Drosky.
Here.
Commissioner Parnas.
Here.
Commissioner Miller.
Here.
Vice Mayor Battle.
Here.
Mayor Gans.
Here.
If we could have everyone please stand for a moment of silence in our Pledge of Allegiance.
With the Pledge of Allegiance, City Fly of the United States of America, and to freedom of liberty for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty in its essence, for all.
Just a reminder for everyone, if you please turn off your cell phones, or at least silence them. We have acknowledgement of our City Board meeting minutes, Cultural Committee meeting minutes for November 19th, 2018, November 26th and December 3rd of 2018, the Hillsborough Inlet District meeting minutes for December 17th, 2018.
I'd like to make a motion to acknowledge the minutes just described.
We have a motion. Can we have a second?
Second.
Motion of second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And also approval of the City Commission Agenda for February 19th, 2019.
I'd like to make a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
We have a motion of second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Passes unanimously. Um, this should be fun. And someone stole it, so it's gonna be a little hard to do it. What happened to my shirt?
Oh, your shirt?
Thank you. The City Attorney.
I was trying to get it out of your way.
Appreciate that. Um, this is a certificate of appreciation for someone who means the world to all of us here in the city of Deerfield Beach. It welcomes someone who's been a part of the city for a very long time now. This is not goodbye, but this is congratulations. But tonight, we would like to give a certificate of recognition to Major Robert Schnackenberg. Apparently with an address change, also comes a facial hair change, so quite impressed. For his recent promotion to Major, as a result of his hard work and dedication, Major Schnackenberg has served the city of Deerfield Beach residents as captain for the last six years. He's truly been an asset to BSO and to the city of Deerfield Beach. The certificate of recognition presented to also Rodney Brimlow for his promotion to captain for the city of Deerfield Beach. For your recent promotion to captain as a result of your hard work and dedication, Captain Brimlow has 24 years of service in law enforcement and has been with the city of Deerfield Beach since 2017. He is truly an asset to BSO as well as the city. Couple things about Major Schnackenberg. You're not getting off the hook anytime soon. There are a lot of things I think all of us could personally say, but I'll stick to what is scripted and not go off-script. But Chief Schnackenberg was promoted from rank of captain to major after serving Deerfield Beach community for the past six years. Major Schnackenberg will now oversee the Criminal Investigations Division of the Broward Sheriff's Office. Major Robert Schnackenberg began his law enforcement career as a patrol officer right here in the city of Deerfield Beach back in 1986. Apparently child labor laws were not in place back then. He became a deputy sheriff after the department merged with the Broward Sheriff's Office in January 1990. Major Schnackenberg was the commander for several specialized Broward Sheriff's Officer units before being named the city of Deerfield Beach Police Chief in January of 2013. During his tenure, he formed the Tactical Deployment Team, the TDT, to operate under the community-oriented policing philosophy to promote the use of partnerships and problem-solving techniques within our city. TDT handles multiple responsibilities and proactively addresses quality of life issues that give rise to public safety. His work with the residents and the business owners have increased the trust of law enforcement in the city of Deerfield Beach. The Deerfield Beach Tactical Deployment Team was selected as the BSO Unit of the Year in 2016, and they are the model for all other police districts in BSO. Deerfield Beach was the first patrol district to implement the use of deployable license plate readers and established a monitoring room, which is now going to be expanded to a real-time crime center. Deerfield Beach was instrumental in initiating the BSO drone program and the first patrol district to have full body-worn cameras. And our appreciation for you is tremendous. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
Chief, we're gonna embarrass you first by giving you this.
As you know, if you've ever seen me, I wear nothing but Deerfield stuff that happens in the shirts all the time, so thank you very much for another piece of article. I wanna thank the City Manager, the Mayor, the Commissioners, the Vice Mayor, for all your support and patience and understanding while I was the district captain here. It meant a lot to me. We had some very great times and we had some bad times, but we always endured them together, and I appreciate that. Thirty-three years ago, I was hired by the city of Deerfield Beach, and as I patrolled the streets and I walked the hallways, I had dreams of becoming the police chief. Burgess, you gave me that opportunity six years ago. Thank you very much. It's been an honor to be here.
To the men and women behind me who come to work every day and risk their lives for the people of this city, thank you so much for the hard work that you did for me. It means a lot.
As you said, it's not a goodbye, because you know my favorite lunch spots are here, so I'll probably run into a bunch of you. So with that, I leave this district in the very capable hands of Rodney Brimlow. He has a vision for this district, and I hope that you afford him the opportunity to do that vision like you did me. I wanna thank Sheriff Tony for promoting me and giving me this opportunity to do something that I love, which is criminal investigations. And I want you all to know, the city of Deerfield Beach will always be my home. It has always been my home. And if you ever need anything, please don't hesitate to call me. With that, I say thank you.
Thank you. Next person I'd like to introduce is our new captain, Captain Rodney Brimlow.
Yes.
Rodney Brimlow was promoted from the rank of lieutenant to captain and has been selected to serve as the city's police chief. Captain Brimlow comes to us with 24 years of law enforcement experience. Captain Brimlow was assigned to the city of Deerfield Beach in 2017 to serve as the executive officer, after serving as the executive officer in the city of Weston for four years. Captain Rodney Brimlow began his law enforcement career as a deputy sheriff with the Broward Sheriff's Office in 1995. Captain Brimlow's experience in command assignments include road patrol, criminal investigations, law enforcement command operations and administration, strategic intelligence, accreditation, and staff inspections. Captain Brimlow graduated from the University of Florida, we'll forgive you for that, and Harvard Business School, and he has also received a master's degree in theology from St. Vincent de Paul Seminary. He has also attended the National Sheriff's Association Executive Leadership Program. Throughout his career, he has received advanced and specialized training in professional development, organizational strategic management, leadership, and various areas of policing and investigations and law enforcement. Captain Brimlow would like to present Major Schnackenberg with an appreciation award on behalf of the BSO Deerfield Beach District, but first I'd like us all to welcome Captain Rodney Brimlow.
My first shirt. This is a very successful night already. It's fine. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Ms. Vice Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager, and Staff. On behalf of the Broward Sheriff's Office, Deerfield Beach District, I would also like to present Major Schnackenberg with a token of appreciation from us, his staff. For the past six years, as the Mayor mentioned, the Deerfield Beach District has been blessed with his leadership, and during this time, most people don't know, but the crime index for the city has dropped significantly and far below the national average. Deerfield Beach is a safer place to live today because of his work and his dedication to this city. As his executive officer for the past year and a half, I want to also personally and especially recognize him for his leadership, his guidance, and being my friend. Mr. Mayor, now I have one more presentation. Each month, we recognize those employees who have gone well above and beyond, those who have excelled in some way by their efforts to ensure the safety in our community, to solve crimes, and to bring justice in our community. But tonight, I want to bring to the attention of the Commission and to the citizens here, an employee of ours who has done incredible work and has accomplished great feats over the last year. Tonight, I want to recognize Deerfield Beach District's 2018 Employee of the Year, who doesn't know that he's the employee of the year, so I'd ask that Sergeant Steve Honduras come up front. I asked him earlier if he had a clean uniform. He did change his shirt, so we're good.
I pressed my pants, too.
If he had known that he was the employee of the month, he wouldn't have come. He's a very humble man, a great asset to the city. It was a little bit over a year ago that Major Schnackenberg and I had a wonderful opportunity to revamp some of our crime suppression team and to bring in a new leader. Sergeant Honduras came to the city with high recommendations, as he has a vast experience working in strategic investigations and street-level crimes. And he came to us with a vision, one that became clear to his staff and his detectives as they ramped up their efforts to combat violent crime, to suppress illegal narcotics and gang activity, to keep criminals out of this city, and to assist in special operations and investigations, to ensure the safety of our 80,000 residents who are here to live, work, and play, and those 50,000 or more that come here each day as visitors. He takes his job seriously and is one of the most sought-after and passionate sergeants in this agency. On top of his stellar character and integrity, Sergeant Honduras is also an incredibly effective supervisor and leader. He's a producer. Just as an example, during this past year, under his leadership, his team has seized more than 200 pounds of narcotics, including cocaine, heroin, acid, illegal marijuana, that deadly drug of flakka, and tons of illicit prescription drugs. The street value for those drugs exceeds $2 million. That's $2 million worth of drugs that never made it into the hands of the kids that live in our community. That's $2 million that was taken away as revenue from the drug dealers that would come into this city to try to corrupt it and make it unsafe. They also seized 37 firearms, thousands of rounds of ammunition, and even body armor and bulletproof plates from those who were coming here to cause harm, as they arrested more than 300 individuals for serious and violent crimes. And to further impact their criminal enterprises, the crime suppression team led by Sergeant Honduras confiscated more than a half a million dollars in assets this year. Those assets were being used by criminals to continue their bad behavior and to continue to threaten the citizens and the visitors of our city. He took his mission to heart and led his team consistently throughout 2018, with dedication and leadership, always looking out for his team and looking out for the people in this city. So it is with great pleasure that I am happy to give him and to recognize him as the Deerfield Beach District 2018 Employee of the Year. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
First of all, y'all are really sneaky. Second of all, I cannot possibly stand up here and accept this award without recognizing my team. I'd like my team to come down here with me and receive this award. Do you guys know about this?
No.
These guys are the true work behind everything that Captain Brimlow said. Without them, I'm nothing. Without each other, we're nothing. We've managed to foster a good team ethic. We've had a lot of ups, a lot of downs, but we also know that we challenge each other, we make each other better, and we stay together always. But this is more than I could ever, I would've ever thought about today, but thank you. Thank you very much. Thanks for giving the opportunity to do this job.
Congratulations. Congratulations, thank you. Did you have the body camera on when you got that spill? Our next, next items we have are a presentation by Fire Chief Joseph Fernandez thanking the Commission for the support of the ISO Class 1 rating. Fire Chief here? Excellent.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, Mr. Manager. First, I'd like to introduce and welcome our new undersheriff, who's here on behalf of Sheriff Tony, undersheriff Colonel Sean Zukowski. I can tend to be long-winded, so I won't tonight, so you can get on with the business of the evening, but to the townspeople and to the board, I want to just convey Sheriff Tony's regret that he couldn't be here in person this evening. Busy times, transition, all that kinda stuff. I assure you that both his and my focus is on the community at large, and you're in good hands, especially because of all the things we've talked about already tonight. I'm humbled to be in your presence, but I'm privileged to be working with such fine people at the Broward Sheriff's Office, to include most certainly and most definitely the fire department aspect of the Broward Sheriff's Office, often overlooked, but never misunderstood the contribution that they make. So appreciate the efforts, and I'll turn it over to the guys who know better than me about fighting fires and what this means to the city.
Thank you.
Thank you, Colonel. On December 21st, 2018, the city and I received a letter from the Insurance Services Office. And for all the residents that are here or watching the Commission meeting on TV, this is a monumental event for the city. It's one that highlights the partnership between the city and the Broward Sheriff's Office Department of Fire Rescue. In 2014, we first were able to get a ISO rating of one. When you get it, it's even harder to retain it. Since 2014, the process of getting it, the metrics, the analytics have become tougher. And I'm proud to say, and the city does have a sneak peek, that on December 21st, 2018, again, the city and your fire rescue department received an ISO rating of one. I'd like to put that in perspective for those that don't know what it is. The rating goes from 10 to a 1. And to truly put that in perspective, everyone needs to understand that it takes into account city infrastructure, water, equipment, documentation, training, communications, the number of firefighters that respond to an incident scene. It's a major, major undertaking, and to have gotten it two rating periods in a row is fantastic. So just to put it in perspective, and I know I repeated myself, in 2019, out of 46,000, 45,000 and change, public communities that were raided, only 307 in the entire nation have an ISO rating of one. That's 307 out of almost 46,000 communities that were raided. So you're in a very, very unique class. You're able to tell residents and business owners that you have the highest level of fire protection. It affects residential and commercial insurance rates, and more important than any of that, it means that you can do a superb job of saving life and property. And I have to commend the city for your partnership in accomplishing this. We're glad to be your fire department that has made this happen. Together with me tonight are Deputy Chief Holness, your district chief, Matt Pelletieri, and Tori Faccio, 4321 Union President. All of these are stakeholders that form part of the collaborative along with you that allow us to reach this level of success and safety for your residents. So with that, we do have a presentation to give you. And we can put this up on the mantle here. Mayor, there is a coin from the ISO, but from your fire department, this is commemorating the ISO one for the second time in a row. Congratulations.
Thank you very, very much for all that you do for us, and it is an honor for us to have this rating, and we know we couldn't do it without the partnership that we have, and thank you for keeping our residents and our businesses safe.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Good night.
Yes. The next item on the agenda is Item Number Three. Item Number Three and Item Number Three-A are related items. They will require separate votes and a public hearing. Is it okay with the Commission if I read both of those titles into the record now? I suspect the presentation that's gonna be given covers both of the items as well. Seeing no objection, I'm gonna go ahead and do that. The first item is a resolution of the City Commission of the city of Deerfield Beach approving a major site plan application from 1500 Southeast Third Court LLC for interior and exterior facade renovations to the existing two-story building, landscape improvements, removal of on-street parking spaces, and the addition of a dumpster enclosure on the property located at 1500 Southeast Third Court within the Cove Overlay Zoning District. The second item is a resolution of the City Commission of the city of Deerfield Beach, Florida, approving a revocable license agreement with 1500 Southeast Third Court LLC for public outdoor seating adjacent to the property located at 1500 Southeast Third Court, and authorizing execution of that revocable license agreement. Do we have the applicant here to make a presentation?
Evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. Scott Backman, on behalf of the applicant.
Mr. Backman, you're entitled to a quasi-judicial hearing. Do you choose to waive the quasi-judicial hearing?
We will waive the formalities of the quasi-judicial hearing. We'll be making a PowerPoint presentation. I do have some materials that I would like to submit simply for the record, if we can get the housekeeping out of the way. So we're just gonna be submitting a package, includes a PowerPoint presentation that we're presenting this evening, as well as some other items, all of which I believe the city would take judicial notice of.
Throughout 2018 with dedication and leadership, always looking out for his team and looking out for the people in this city. So it is with great pleasure that I am happy to give him and to recognize him as the Deerfield Beach District 2018 Employee of the Year.
Thank you.
First of all, y'all are really sneaky. Second of all, I cannot possibly stand up here and accept this award without recognizing my team. I'd like my team to come down here with me and receive this award. You guys know about this?
No.
These guys are the true work behind everything that Captain Ribble has said. Without them, I'm nothing. Without each other, we're nothing. We've managed to foster a good team ethic. We've had a lot of ups, a lot of downs, but we also know that we challenge each other, we make each other better, and we stay together always. But this is more than I could ever, I would have ever thought about today, but thank you. Thank you very much. Thanks for giving the opportunity to do this job.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Thank you. Did you have the body camera on when you got that spill? Our next items we have are a presentation by Fire Chief Joseph Fernandez thanking the Commission for the support of the ISO Class 1 rating. Fire Chief here? Excellent.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, Mr. Manager. First, I'd like to introduce and welcome our new undersheriff who's here on behalf of Sheriff Tony, undersheriff Colonel Sean Zukowski.
I can tend to be long-winded, so I won't tonight, so you can get on with the business of the evening, but to the townspeople and to the board, I want to just convey Sheriff Tony's regret that he couldn't be here in person this evening. Busy times, transition, all that kind of stuff. I assure you that both his and my focus is on the community at large, and you're in good hands, especially because of all the things we've talked about already tonight. I'm humbled to be in your presence, but I'm privileged to be working with such fine people at Broward Sheriff's Office to include most certainly and most definitely the fire department aspect of the Broward Sheriff's Office, often overlooked, but never misunderstood the contribution that they make. So appreciate the efforts, and I'll turn it over to the guys who know better than me about fighting fires and what this means to the city.
Thank you.
Thank you, Colonel. On December 21st, 2018, the city and I received a letter from the Insurance Services Office. And for all the residents that are here or watching the commission meeting on TV, this is a monumental event for the city. It's one that highlights the partnership between the city and the Broward Sheriff's Office Department of Fire Rescue. In 2014, we first were able to get an ISO rating of 1. When you get it, it's even harder to retain it. Since 2014, the process of getting it, the metrics, the analytics have become tougher. And I'm proud to say, and the city does have a sneak peek, that on December 21st, 2018, again, the city and your fire rescue department received an ISO rating of 1. I'd like to put that in perspective for those that don't know what it is. The rating goes from 10 to 1. And to truly put that in perspective, everyone needs to understand that it takes into account city infrastructure, water, equipment, documentation, training, communications, the number of firefighters that respond to an incident scene. It's a major, major undertaking. And to have gotten it two rating periods in a row is fantastic. So just to put it in perspective, and I know I repeated myself, in 2019, out of 46,000, 45,000 and change, public communities that were rated, only 307 in the entire nation have an ISO rating of 1. That's 307 out of almost 46,000 communities that were rated. So you're in a very, very unique class. You're able to tell residents and business owners that you have the highest level of fire protection. It affects residential and commercial insurance rates, and more important than any of that, it means that you can do a superb job of saving life and property. And I have to commend the city for your partnership in accomplishing this. We're glad to be your fire department that has made this happen. Together with me tonight are Deputy Chief Holness, your district chief, Matt Pelletieri, and Tori Faccio, 4321 Union President. All of these are stakeholders that form part of the collaborative along with you that allow us to reach this level of success and safety for your residents. So with that, we do have a presentation to give you. And we can put this up on the mantle here. Mayor, there is a coin from the ISO, but from your fire department, this is commemorating the ISO 1 for the second time in a row. Congratulations.
Thank you very, very much for all that you do for us, and it is an honor for us to have this rating, and we know we couldn't do it without the partnership that we have. And thank you for keeping our residents and our businesses safe.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Good night.
Yes. The next item on the agenda is item number 3. Item number 3 and item number 3A are related items. They will require separate votes and a public hearing. Is it okay with the Commission if I read both of those titles into the record now? I suspect the presentation that's going to be given covers both of the items as well. Seeing no objection, I'm going to go ahead and do that. The first item is a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Deerfield Beach approving a major site plan application from 1500 Southeast 3rd Court LLC for interior and exterior facade renovations to the existing two-story building, landscape improvements, removal of on-street parking spaces, and the addition of a dumpster enclosure on the property located at 1500 Southeast 3rd Court within the Cove Overlay Zoning District. The second item is a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Deerfield Beach, Florida approving a revocable license agreement with 1500 Southeast 3rd Court LLC for public outdoor seating adjacent to the property located at 1500 Southeast 3rd Court and authorizing execution of that revocable license agreement.
Do we have the applicant here to make a presentation?
Evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. Scott Backman, on behalf of the applicant.
Mr. Backman, you're entitled to a quasi-judicial hearing. Do you choose to waive the quasi-judicial hearing?
We will waive the formalities of the quasi-judicial hearing. We'll be making a PowerPoint presentation. I do have some materials that I would like to submit simply for the record, if we can get the housekeeping out of the way. So we're just going to be submitting a package. It includes a PowerPoint presentation that we're presenting this evening, as well as some other items, all of which I believe the city would take judicial notice of regardless, which are code provisions, things of that nature, based on the Cove Overlay, things that we're presenting on this evening.
If you want to give it to the part.
Thanks, Christina. So we're presenting on two items tonight as a city attorney reference. We are presenting on a major site plan application as well as a revocable license, both of which will be covered in the presentation that you're reviewing that's also up on the screens before you. The property that we're discussing is a building located at the very far west end of the Cove Shopping Center, also known as the Cove Overlay District. The boundary of the Cove Overlay District is identified in blue on the PowerPoint presentation that you're viewing. It effectively, as the city is well aware, as the commission is well aware, includes all of the areas just on the south side of Hillsborough, adjacent to the Intracoastal Waterway, west out to southeast 15th Avenue, a number of restaurants, retail, office space, hospitality uses, et cetera. What we are proposing to do and have been working with the city on for well over a year at this point is just bring a little bit more of the intent of the Cove Overlay District, try and add a little bit more life into that western side of the Cove Shopping Center, as you'll see in the presentation. This is one of the, so this is a photo along with the necks that are original photographs of what the building has actually looked like. The building's been empty, blighted, hasn't really provided much productivity for the Cove Shopping Center in a pretty significant amount of time, and as I mentioned, we are proposing something that we believe provides a little bit of excitement and brings a little bit more of a pedestrian flair to the Cove Shopping Center. So some project history. We first approached the city back in the fall of 2017 as my client was inquiring about the purchase of the property. Some of the photos that you saw was the building in various stages of renovation. There were a number of code enforcement and unsafe structure violations pending against the building because of the state that it had been in for so long. We had met with the Planning and Zoning Department, the CRA, other representatives on city staff really to talk about what the right concept for this particular location within the shopping center might be. Ultimately, as we worked our way through it, we arrived on a concept that it would include restaurant concepts, we're proposing a brewery, as well as some retail and some office that would occupy the building. Back in April of 2018, a presentation was made to the CRA, I believe the same makeup of this board, requesting certain financial incentives that could be utilized for facade improvements, landscape improvements, public space improvements, very similar in one of the examples we utilized in making the application to what was done with Flanagan's on the beach, really again trying to go with the theme of additional pedestrian flavor and feel within the Cove Shopping Center and adding additional life out on the western side of the shopping center. In 2018, this commission approved a text amendment to the Cove Overlay that provided a number of different changes, one of which is the revocable license agreement, which we'll be talking about. In October of this year, of last year, the Community Appearance Board reviewed our plans, which you'll see in just a moment, and the Planning and Zoning Board in December of last year, both unanimously approved the application that's before you this evening. The proposed site plan, and what you see within the red box is the ownership, the property line of the building, and outside the red box is what's defined within the revocable license agreement that we'll talk about in a few moments as public space. The area on the top of the screen, which is the north side of the building, is currently four parallel parking spots. We're proposing to relocate those to the south side of the building, which you'll see in just a moment. And we are proposing to really revitalize and add some additional activity within this area of the shopping center. We're proposing to really create an additional public space. Currently, I believe there's about seven or eight feet of area between the edge of the building and the parking spaces, maybe not even that much. At the end of the proposed improvements, it'll be over 20 feet wide worth of improvements that'll create additional public plaza space. There will be some proposed outside seating for some of the uses within the building as well. So you can see here, this is a survey of the property, the four parking spaces are currently located on the north side of the building. We are proposing with the site plan, as you can see on the south side of the building, there's a 15-foot wide alley. There is room within the property line, between the property line and the building, to accommodate four parallel parking spaces, and those will be provided kind of within the property line on the south side of the building, adjacent to the 15-foot wide alley. Some project renderings, I believe we've got three or four graphic renderings of what we are proposing here. You can see, looking adjacent to Southeast 3rd Court, the substantial improvements that are being proposed. The idea here would effectively be to kind of raise the area a little bit, create that wider sidewalk that you just saw on the site plan. There would be some proposed outside seating that would support the restaurant and brewery use. Another view of it, looking from the east to the west. Again, full facade renovations, obviously. You saw the photos earlier in the presentation of what the building currently looks like. This is a western elevation, looking from west to east, as well as a view down the alley. All three sides of the building facade are going to be renovated and upgraded as part of these proposed improvements. So a little bit about the Cove Overlay District. Really, your code sets forth a purpose and intent. It talks about the idea of establishing a district that has commercial compatibility with the adjacent residential uses and wants to improve the commercial viability of the district, which effectively encompasses the entirety of the shopping center and obviously bringing a little bit more life, bringing some people into the shopping center. Obviously, a lot of this would probably be off our uses, so it wouldn't necessarily in most instances conflict with some of the existing businesses, some of the offices where parking demand sometimes becomes a problem. This complies with all of the development regulations with the Cove Overlay District, complies with the architectural design guidelines within the Cove Overlay District. And then the last element, as I mentioned earlier, was the code change earlier and the companion application tonight, which is the revocable license agreement. And as you all know, this item was on the agenda for each of the last two city commission meetings. We spent a lot of time and pushed the item twice in working very closely with city staff and your city attorney's office in order to ensure all the proper protections in the form of language, indemnities, revocation, things of that nature, are all included within this license agreement to the benefit and protection of the city. So a couple of points about the revocable license agreement. I think first and foremost, the area within the Cove Overlay, the Cove Shopping Center, yes, they have street names and it's a drive, but actually, if you look very closely, and we spent some time with your city attorneys working on this at the plat and the plat dedication, the area that within the shopping center, the parking spaces, the drive aisles are not actually right-of-way. It was dedicated to the perpetual use of the public for proper public purposes. And we spent a lot of time in working up this application and the intent behind it in order to ensure that the public purpose is to foster the further intent of the Cove Overlay District and the proposed use here in this, for lack of a better term, public-private partnership in allowing the expansion of what's been an old, blighted, empty building that has really served no purpose to the Cove Shopping Center to kind of come in and with the assistance of this public space as it's defined in the revocable license agreement, create an opportunity for some vibrancy, for some additional life within the Cove Overlay. A couple of examples within the existing shopping center today of outside seating, all of these utilize the public space, the public area. So you can see in the photos here, some within the property limits, just outside the property limits, and so very consistent with what we're proposing, obviously, the biggest difference being the four parking spaces that we're relocating to the south side of the building. The license agreement itself, as I mentioned, and I'll run through this relatively quickly, but it includes probably over and above what might be necessary protective language to ensure that the use is clearly a public-private use. The public and the private have the same exact rights as one another under this document. The operators of this building have absolutely no right to ask someone to get up and leave, vacate the premises. Everyone is welcome here. It's exactly what my client wants. We want to create that buzz. We want to create that feel. Everyone is welcome here. If they're patronizing the establishment, wonderful. That's obviously what we want from the private sector. But the real idea here is to have people in and around the area, not only patronizing our property, but also patronizing all of the other restaurants and retail shops within the Cove Shopping Center. Just another graphic that kind of identifies the public space improvements. These are all identified within the revocable license agreement, as well as exhibits to the revocable license agreement that identify, and you can see where the paver walkway is. It extends from the property line all the way out to the limits of where you saw on the graphic rendering earlier, there will be a railing, all fully paved, fully upgraded to create, you know, that good public-private feel with an outdoor, almost plaza type of setting. These are all terms of the revocable license agreement that are effectively to the benefit of the city. Very broad language that if there's probably only one instance of someone saying to a member of the public they don't belong in a given area, that the city has the right to revoke this. My client is spending millions of dollars into this property with the upgrades, with the tenants, everything that we are trying to do to improve this area, to bring something into the Cove Overlay District that, you know, at least is in line with what the city has put in place with the charade and all the planning and the code principles that you've put into place. We're not going to risk the operational issues or concerns of not having the public there. As I told you, it's exactly what we want, and we're not going to risk the significant investment that we're putting into this property, into this building by violating any terms of this revocable license agreement. Again, it provides for maintenance. We, the licensee, assumes all risk. There are indemnification provisions. In the event there is a cause for revocation, there is security provided by the agreement and the ability for the city to say, you need to remove all improvements that you made. So at the end of the day, I think there's relatively little risk to the city here. Regardless, clearly, there's a public purpose furthering the intent of the Cove Overlay District, but this revocable license agreement clearly puts into place protections for the city, protections for my client as well, to ensure that this plan that we're bringing forward, trying to do something a little bit different, a little bit unique, and a little bit special within the Cove Overlay District is going to be to the benefit of the community at large, to the benefit of the Cove Shopping Center, to the benefit of the residents of the city of Deerfield Beach. I believe that is it. Happy to answer any questions. We have our architects here. My client is here as well. So any questions that the commission may have? Thank you.
Thank you. Commission comments before we open to the public? No? I'm going to open it to the public.
Great, thank you.
Any speakers? Chris McDonald is our first speaker. It's your name and address for the record, sir.
Chris McDonald, 739 Southeast 10th Avenue. I've been here many times before regarding the same procedural issues. It seems that if the commission approves this resolution, it will be again reinterpreting the city code without requiring a variance from this applicant. A variance would require notices to every property owner within 500 feet of the subject property and also the opportunity for the public to be heard. The provision that's being affected here is Section 98-53B of the code, and that specifically states that the city may grant the revocable license for the placement of street furniture and related support structures adjacent to operating restaurants in the areas of the Cove Shopping Center where there is parallel parking. There will be no parallel parking on this project. The applicant should commit an equivalent number of parking spaces, which they're doing in the rear of the subject property instead of in the front of the property. They have, in my opinion, they have no right at all to go forward with this plan without providing additional parking adjacent to the front of the premises. Also, I'd just like to point out, the western part of the Cove Shopping Center faces the residential area of the Cove. My brother owns a property within 500 feet. I don't think he really wants to look at this facade. I'm concerned with the city's protections, of course, you know, hold on, less agreements maybe being named as an additional insured may help, but there are certainly liability issues which I don't think we should subject ourselves to. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We have Tom Conick.
Good evening, Commission. My name is Tom Conick. My address is 411 East Hillsborough Boulevard, Deerfield Beach. On the PowerPoint, could you show the first picture from the PowerPoint? No, it went back. It was the blue. It was the math. My client, Jane D. Enterprises, Dr. Ortley is the primary tenant. He, his building is, and his property is, right there. Thank you. Okay, so he's affected, and by the way, right now, there are four parking spaces. I was down there at 2 o'clock this afternoon, and there were actually five cars parked My client is going to be significantly impacted about at this property. We are not objecting to the restaurant or the office space or retail in the site plan. But what we are objecting to is public parking being destroyed in the Cove Shopping Center. Taking parking spaces and say, hey, we're putting them in the alley, that realistically and effectively, that takes it out of play for use for people parking. Realistically, someone who's going to go to Dr. Ortley's dental office or a doctor office, they're going to be very reluctant to park in an alley as opposed in the Cove Shopping Center, so it's going to do nothing to alleviate the parking problems. Let's keep in mind the information in your background material that states concerning the Cove parking lot that, and this is on page 2 of your backup material, the plat requires the public parking lot area of the Cove Plaza to be dedicated to the perpetual use of the public. The public parking that exists in the Cove Shopping Center is needed and is used. The public parking at those spaces is used and benefits the public. It benefits the doctor and dental offices, the businesses and the restaurants. Go there during the workday and at night, and those public parking spaces are being used by the public as the public patronizes the businesses in the Cove. Those parking spaces will be destroyed, and the parking problems will be made worse. The choice you have is a simple one. On the one hand, there is a public need and a public purpose for these parking spaces continuing to be used as parking spaces for the public.
Would you like an additional minute?
Yes. In fact, yes. In fact, the public requires the public parking lot area in the Cove. On the other hand, the applicant is requesting that these public parking spaces be destroyed and outdoors parking be used instead. No one other than the applicant has ever stated that the Cove Shopping Center needs the outdoor seating at the southwest entrance of the Cove Shopping Center, and that that need is so great that the public parking spaces that are used by the public must be destroyed for at least 20 years in order to do this. You can approve the site plan, but to approve the destruction of the public parking places on the thing that they're, well, we're going to do something in the alleyway, it's not fair, it's not right, it's bad public policy. You have the power to either destroy these parking places or to preserve them. Please preserve them.
Thank you.
Richard Majori, 1540 Southeast 3rd Court. I like the fact aid, I like the concept, but the problem is there isn't sufficient parking. What you're doing here is you're changing the use of the building from a low demand for parking to a very high demand. And if you go through the shopping center at night, you will see, particularly on weekends, it's packed with cars, serving the existing restaurants and... packed with cars, serving the existing restaurants, and as far as the outdoor seating goes, I mean, you're taking away parking. Now, if you put the outdoor seating in and you approve this, I would benefit by that seating part, since it's public, I could use it as well in my restaurant. So, but I think it's wrong to destroy the parking spaces and give up any parking in that shopping center. It's just impossible right now. Thank you.
Next, I have Joseph Ortley. Dr. Ortley?
Hi, I'm Dr. Joseph Ortley. I own a dental practice in, well, I'm partners in a dental practice in the Cove Shopping Center. I own the building, which is lots 9, 10, and 11 in the Cove. Back when we had the whole renovation of the Cove, I believe we lost about nine to 11 spots then, when the Cove was redone, and since then, the businesses have grown in the Cove. We, on a regular daily basis, have patients that are riding around for upwards of 15 minutes looking for a spot to park. So, imagine, I mean, it sounds all nice and sunny that you move the parking spots around to the other side of the building, yay. Put your 90-year-old mother, or a 70-year-old aunt, or somebody who's looking for a spot, oh, go around the back of the building in the alley and park, and then they have to walk all the way over to where they're going. So, that really is not a solution. I think that to take away public parking that is already at a premium and not available for the people to even get to the places they're trying to get to without having to ride around for 10 to 15 minutes is, I think it's ludicrous. I don't understand giving away public land and public space for a private enterprise to use because it's going to look pretty? I think you need to rethink the parking space issue. I am not against the restaurant, I am not against development of property, but I think everybody else in the Cove who has done things the way they're supposed to do them is going to resent, and I also wondered why I didn't hear about this until last October was the first notification that was sent to me, and while all this negotiation was going on. And actually, if you look at the little circle from the first photo you had up, that little circle doesn't even include most of the tenants in the Cove Shopping Center were not notified that this was going on, and we are all totally impacted by it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dan Hirsch, 330 Southeast 19th Avenue. I didn't see in the backup anything about this, so in the interest of full disclosure, transparency, and good optics, I would like everyone to know that the law firm of Dunne, Miskell, and Bachman LLP, located at 14 Southeast 4th Street in Boca Raton, Florida, has given a $1,000 campaign contribution to every single one of the commissioners sitting up here. Now, my problem is with the elimination of these four parking spots. I drive through the Cove every single day, and I think Commissioner Miller probably drives through there a lot also. Have any of you commissioners spoke to the property owners and the tenants and hear how long people drive around on weekends looking for one parking space? Now, if the hours of operation of this restaurant were only nighttime only, maybe I could understand the elimination of these parking spaces, but parking spaces in the Cove are golden, and you should, if they're able to put four in the back, that's great, but you cannot eliminate the four in the front, and I challenge any of you to go there on weekends and understand exactly what I'm talking about. Thank you.
Thank you. Katie Freitag?
Before I begin, because we're talking about two different agenda items, are we allowed extra time?
Sure.
Thank you. Okay. Good evening, commissioners. Katie Freitag, 418 Southeast 2nd Street. I will go fast because I do have a lot of points to bring up. There's a new restaurant opening in the Cove Shopping Plaza next Wednesday, or next weekend. It's called Bourbon and Duval. You probably haven't heard of them because they are not asking for any special compensation or variances from the city. Maybe this applicant can follow suit and build within their means as Bourbon and Duval are. Eighty percent of the people that come to the tip walk or ride their bikes. The parking will not affect the tip as much as it will Crepe Cafe, Antonio's, Arrow Juice, Thai Spice, Two Georges, or, like I said, the new opening of Bourbon and Duval. Upon looking at the map, there is a bicycle rack that has pretty much gone non-existent. You want us to ride our bikes, and you want us to put our bikes at the Cove and places like that, but you're taking out our bike rack, which is spotted on there. It's no longer on the drawings. No space for recycling dumpster. You're putting in a dumpster space for one dumpster, not two. We need to bring recycling back into the Cove Shopping Center, and you need to have two dumpsters, not just one. Forty-eight seats for the public. Is that definitely forty-eight seats for the public, or is the restaurant going to maintain 24 seats on their own? If they are, how are you going to determine and delineate the difference? Removing this sidewalk is going to force families to walk their family with their restaurant, with their dogs and their walkers and their strollers right through the middle of the restaurant. There are families that do not want to do that, but the way you have the sidewalk going is right through the middle of the public parking, the public seating area. That is going to hamper families that are walking their dogs with strollers, et cetera. The CRA is giving $200,000 for the facade. My question is, that also includes landscaping, but the applicant is not planning on doing additional landscaping. They're planning on paying back into a fund. The CRA is paying the applicant to pay into a fund to not have landscaping? That does not make any sense. It's completely redundant. Not enough space for, oh, moving the parking spaces to the back of the alley. On numerous occasions, I have had to contact the city manager's office to have the trash picked up and force the trash guys to come back to the tipperary to pick up the trash. The reason they claim that they can't do it, they couldn't do it the first time around, is because the alley is blocked. If there are trucks coming in and delivering to any of the restaurants, it blocks the alley. You're going to put parking cars there, so that is also going to hamper the trucks delivering to the restaurants. It will be every single restaurant down the way. Last thing, this is, they're asking for certain things, or sign variances next. In the displays where they're showing the renderings, there's signage, signage, signage. They're going to be asking for sign variances also. Last but not least, if you want, may I please have one more minute?
Yes.
Last but not least, if you think that you were able to use the Cove parking for shuttles for special events on the beach, and we're having two new restaurants go in with 300-plus new customers every day, the parking for the shuttles is going to be non-existent. Just something taken consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Janet Nederland, and I reside at 1320 Southeast 4th Street. We're going to be directly affected by this restaurant. I have no problem with the restaurant going in. I do have a problem with the variances. You're eliminating four variants, four parking spots, putting them into the back. As Katie says, that's an alley, and that alley gets blocked all the time. It's one way in, one way out. It's not back and forth, okay? It's a one-way alley. The applicant has said that the public purposes in the revocable, the public purposes, it will not be affected, you will keep the public purposes, but your sidewalks are being removed. Where is anybody going to walk? How are pedestrians supposed to get there? There's no place to walk. You're going through their public seating. That's ridiculous. We've made some of these same mistakes on the S curve where variances were granted for parking spots, okay, for JB's, for Oceans 2, 3, 4. Parking does not ever get any better. It only gets worse in time. So, now, I'm asking you, please, do not grant the variances for the parking spots. This is crazy. You're never going to get them back. Let's not make the same mistake here at the Cove as what was made at the beach. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Daryl Finkelmann?
Hi there. My name's Daryl Finkelmann. I'm a resident and owner of a house on 1420 Southeast 4th Street. If I walk out the front of my house, look diagonally across 15th Ave, that building is right there. I have a couple of concerns. My major concern is sound and noise, especially because this facade is supposed to wrap around on 15th Avenue. There are several different establishments in the Cove already, but none of them wrap around like that. I have nothing against the tipperary, but if you put the people that sit out in front of the tipperary at this spot late at night, I think I'm going to hear that, so I have some concerns about that. I also have concerns about people who don't live in the neighborhood parking in that alleyway. Those are people who might not be concerned about the people who live in the neighborhood, and they might be making noise. Also, I don't know if they're planning on, because I couldn't really tell, I saw the drawings before, but I couldn't really tell, are they planning on putting any speakers or television screens on the wraparound? Are they going to be making noise that way, or is it just going to be noise of people that are visiting the restaurant? I also have concerns about the fact, I didn't know about this part where, whatever the seating is, it's not just for the people that are going to the restaurants. It's for anybody to use. As a resident who's concerned about noise, I'm not so sure. I'm 100% keen on that either. I don't know why that's, why everyone seems to be in favor of that. I guess they don't live where I live, but anyway, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. Marty McGeeery, 1442 Southeast 6th Street, Deerfield Beach. The parking is a major concern. Absolutely. There's no if, ands, or buts about it, all right? However, I haven't heard anybody mention anything about traffic. This commission approved a hotel to be built in the main beach, in the Cove area with no traffic study. I apologize for not having gone through the backups on this. Has there been a traffic study done on this project? Can anybody answer that for me?
We will at the end.
You will at the end? Okay, I'm sorry. Okay, so that's my major concern. 15th Avenue is a straightaway south to 10th Street, and 10th Street is a straightaway south, a straightway east to Federal Highway and to the Sawgrass Expressway. Anybody coming out of that Cove parking, that Cove shopping area with the hotel that's possibly being built, and now with this project being built, nobody's going to make a right and go down Hillsborough to get to Federal Highway. They're going to make a left, and they're going to come right through the Cove residential area, straight through to 10th, straight through to Federal Highway. There are also some small streets in there, like 7th Street, 4th Court, 7th Court, that go straight out to Federal Highway. Those people that are coming late at night, or during the day, or whatever, they're going to be cut through traffic, through streets like 4th Court and 7th Court. They don't have sidewalks. There's no sidewalks on those streets. So, where are the people walking their dogs, their kids, and whatever else, especially in the evenings, early in the evenings, and then during the wintertime when it's dark? This area, the Cove shop, the Cove residential area is going to be highly impacted by this, and I think it's incumbent upon this commission to really look into those traffic patterns, especially since the hotel can be built at any time. There were no stipulations on when they can pull a permit. They can pull it five years from now, six years from now. Generally, there is a time limit when you approve things, and they have to start to build. So, I am very concerned with no sidewalks in the Cove. The traffic flow is going to be horrendous. So, that's just an additional problem with the parking and the noise and the other things that have been, you know, done here. So, I don't know where the answer is, but I can see that my street and my neighborhood is going to be, we're not a gated community. We can't keep people out, and I don't want to keep people out, but this is going to be, this is just too much, too much for those small streets to handle. They're very small, built in the '60s, okay? So, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. I don't think I have any more sheets. Is there anyone else in the public that care to comment on this item?
Freedom Massey, 349 Northeast 19th Avenue. Well, guys, here we go again. The poor Cove Shopping Center. Everybody's picking on them with the parking. We cannot afford to lose any of those spots. We lost so many when we redid it. As Marty said, when the hotel, if the hotel gets built, we are going to be swamped. You cannot approve this. You cannot take away any parking spots, and we can't have more traffic. Thank you.
Michael Hudak, 34 Southeast 9th Avenue. I think we've heard from the public pretty loud as far as what their opinion is. I think the restaurant is a great idea. It's a building that has been empty for a long time, and I think it's needed to have something there, but the traffic, or the parking situation in the Cove is already overflowing, and to add another business there with another 300 or 400 patrons and no concept of where these individuals are going to park is a huge challenge. It's a huge challenge for that business. It's a huge challenge for all of the businesses in the Cove. I know we have the area for the hotel that is completely blocked off, and I don't know if there's anything that the city can do to make temporary arrangements to maybe add some parking spaces or develop that area in some kind of a partnership, but I think we need to find a solution, and I don't think the solution is to add another 200 or 300 cars in a parking lot that is already maxed out. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public on this item? You can speak on this item or the other item as well, either one you'd like.
This item. Elise Miller Plodkin, 1998, Northeast 7th Street. I think having the brewery there is a really good idea, but since everybody is so concerned about parking, I'm just wondering if the building could be redesigned a different way. You know, if the people want to build it there, let them maybe only have angled parking in front, because I go to the Arrow Juice all the time, and there's only like four spots in front of that empty building. It's been really an eyesore, a horrible building. It's been vacant for a long time. If they had angled parking, and angled parking on the side, and just redesign the way the outdoor seating is so that there's more parking spaces, and if you're very worried about parking, since, I mean, this would be a real asset for the city of Deerfield. If we could like rent other spaces, other property, you just spent all that $500,000 for the Chamber of Commerce building. Why can't you have a parking lot, use that instead of some marine center that won't give us any money, have a small parking development built there, not hard to interfere with the houses there, but there's plenty of space there to have parking, and it's just across the street from the Cove. Use other things that are around the area. There's so many vacant stores. There's that gas station that's just down the block, you know, that's for rent. Why can't we rent or buy the property or something? Use spaces, empty lots that have been, that are not being used for businesses, use that and utilize what we have instead of taking away, I think that this business would really be an asset for us, something different that we don't have in the area. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on either item?
Good evening. John Slattery, 1455 Southeast 5th Place in the Cove. A couple of things. I mean, Marty made a great point about adding the addition- A couple of things, I mean, Marty made a great point about adding the additional traffic there. If you are going to be running more traffic through, eventually it's gonna go down Southeast 15th Avenue. I'd like to at least see if you're gonna do this to add some speed tables on there to make it less enjoyable for people to go through there, particularly if they have a few beers. I'm not against having that kind of establishment there. I think it would be nice, actually. What I am concerned about is to find out that, it sounds like, I think, I do believe that CRA money actually means property tax money, just one degree separated. If we're putting forth $200,000 of that, I think we should set some aside, just in case this establishment fails, that we can remediate what that looks like, so that somebody else could take that property over, and we don't have to look at a, you know, faded beer barrel on the side of that building for five years. And also, the moving of the four places, I mean, while it's logical, I imagine that adding the employees to that establishment are probably gonna take up more than four places anyway. So it's probably not really a net gain, regardless of where those places, those spaces are moved to. And to Marty's point again, people walk around that corner, ride their bikes around that corner, everything else, and now we can do it in a safe place on that paved driveway, little sidewalk where there's really no traffic, but it's not gonna make sense for people to walk through there with their dogs, or with their bikes, or anything, going through the middle of that establishment seating area. And also, as we all know in South Florida, outside seating tends to mean smoking area, and if those are gonna be general seating area, imagine that's gonna be like the overflow for the tip to go hang out and smoke. It's probably not gonna be all that enjoyable to go hang out there and walk through that area anyway. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else for either item? Not seeing anybody coming forward, I'm gonna close it to the public. Commissioner Parton, ask you if your light on first?
I'd like to address a few points. People brought up the hotel. The hotel will not take up one single parking space. All the parking for that hotel when it's built is indoor parking within the hotel and valet parking only. You don't lose a single spot. Now, I've heard a lot of opinions, people don't wanna walk from the alley to the dentist's office. My barber is in the Cove, right across from the Tipperary. I know, that's funny. They charge me double because it takes them an hour to find a hair. But there's two barber shops, one right next door to the other. Boy, that was good planning. It's a new barber shop that opened up to the barber shop and beauty salon diagonally across from the Tipperary that's been there for 20 years. Nobody's convinced me that replacing four parking spaces in the front with four parking spaces on the side is such a big deal. Sometimes, I have to walk 100 feet to go to the barber shop, and I'm not 20 years old, but I manage. People may have to walk to go to the dentist whether this is built or not built, because no parking spaces are being taken away. They're being moved. As far as outdoor smoking is concerned, I don't need an area to smoke if I smoke. When I leave the shop, I can light up in the parking lot all day long. I don't see that as an argument. I'd like to hear an argument that has some teeth. People will not like the park in the alley. You're speaking for yourself.
Can I ask, you said you wanted to...
No, you cannot.
No, sir.
You wanted your argument.
No. You had your turn to speak, now it's my turn. I don't see the problem. I see progress. I see life. I have seen restaurants, like a deli opened, it's now a pizza shop, I believe, who didn't make it. There used to be a hardware store, because I lived, of course, from the tip on 3rd Court in the Garden Apartments, 1989 when I first came to Florida. Nice, nice, regular hardware store. Not there anymore. Things change. The Cove does not have an anchor. You go to any shopping center, it's got a Publix, a Macy's, a Marshalls, it's got an anchor store. The Cove has nothing that's an anchor store. It exists, and bringing life to something that just exists is a plus for a neighborhood. It means it's prospering. I think the idea of a brewery in a restaurant is great. I think it's different. I think it'll attract people. People spend money. More people spend money in our shops, the lower your taxes are. You're laughing, but it's true. Business supports, business supports the city as much as the residents do. So healthy business is good for Deerfield. Good business. I was kidding with Joe Conick this afternoon, I hope he'll name the place, the beer, Beer from a Deer. That's where Deerfield, joke. But I'm being serious now. You're not eliminating four parking spaces, you're replacing them with four other parking spaces. So people come, no, we're losing four, no, you're not losing four parking spaces, they're being moved. Two, you bring up the hotel, the hotel is not a parking problem, because it's all inside the hotel with valet parking. Not a single parking space will be given up for the hotel. I understand that change is difficult, but the world doesn't stand still, and neither does Deerfield Beach. I think this is a good project for the city, and I'm gonna approve it.
Vice Mayor Bell?
Just to make the record clear, Mr. Mayor, on page 22 of our backup list of donations received by all of the commissioners, my name is not there, because I did not receive a contribution from this particular entity. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other commissioner comments? I've got a couple of questions, maybe you can answer for everybody. I'm sorry. I'm sure it's your, like...
I was just gonna ask if we could have the applicant back to answer some of the questions, because I know I have some follow-up questions too, but I think it'd be good if the applicant ran through the public comments first.
You wanna go through them first, because I'm trying to put them all together, I'm trying to keep notes. For those of you who get offended when I don't look at you in the face while you're talking, it's because I try to keep notes, I actually try to pay attention to you, so I can ask, answer them later. Some of you get offended, and some of it's ridiculous, because it's not easy to sit up here and do this while we're trying to make decisions. So if you don't mind, I gotta go through all the notes right here to get the questions. You might ask, and yours first, is that all right? Or do you wanna give me a minute to just kinda go through and make sure everything's covered? Did you take notes? I hope so, because you're on the clock more than I am. You're getting paid a hell of a lot more money than I do to sit there.
I did take a handful of notes. I'm happy to walk through and address some of them. A lot of them, I, were really kinda more, you know, resident opinion as it relates to a number of the items, obviously, as it relates to the traffic question that came up, and I pored through the backup, and Eric, please correct me if I'm wrong, I don't believe we did a traffic study, because we are a use permitted by right, a traffic study is not required. There was an analysis in the staff report, if you look, that kinda references it, but when you have uses that are permitted by right, without the need for anything more, restaurants, office, retail, things of that nature, a traffic study is not necessarily required or warranted. No one is sitting here, not myself, not my client, saying that we don't hope that we're going to be successful. It's one of the reasons that we're here, making the requests that we're making. I did hear some of the residents reference the idea that what we're proposing might actually be a good thing for the area, obviously, which is certainly what we hope. I know the city has certainly taken certain action previously as it relates to this, that everyone kinda has the same feel for this. In order to attract the type of tenants that we are looking for on the ground floor, you need that expanded area. As I said earlier in my presentation, I don't know the exact dimension, but maybe somewhere in the neighborhood of plus or minus seven feet or so currently, between the building and where the, those four parallel parking spaces currently exist. In order to attract the type of tenants that we're looking for, you need the 17 to 20 feet or so that we're looking for. It won't necessarily impact or affect, in fact, will probably be better than several of the other locations within the Cove Shopping Center that currently have outside seating. The idea on the site plan, I'm gonna pull it up real quick, the idea on the site plan is that you've got a large paved public space, it's about 20 feet or so, and the outdoor seating's going to be a portion of it. You're going to have a six, seven, eight-foot wide area that is going to be utilized for walkway. The way it's currently shown on the plan is the tables and the seating are on the exterior, so there would be building, walkway, and then tables. However, we've been having conversations with city staff, the tables may be closer to the building, and the walkway may go around the outside, where you saw on some of the renderings and elevations that I showed earlier, where there's that railing and the, kinda that outdoor public space area. That's all stuff that we're finalizing and working through with city staff. It is a much better, and probably safer, condition than the majority of the outside seating areas that I witnessed just this afternoon within the Cove Shopping Center in terms of some of the comments that we heard about people being able to walk through. I mean, a lot of these areas, and by the way, I think they're all great, and having that outside seating adds to the benefit of a shopping center like the Cove. And hopefully, our development, our proposed project, is only going to enhance and do more of that, but is going to create the type of outdoor space that you would really seek for the types of uses that we're pursuing. I thought I had one more, something about landscaping. We're installing landscaping fairly, I think this is maybe a good slide, you can see, we're gonna be making substantial public improvements on the west side of the building, as well as gonna be, I believe, rerouting sidewalk, adding additional landscaping, a small additional landscape area just on the, what I guess would be the northeast side of the area as well. So there is additional landscaping that's gonna be going in. I'm not sure what else, Mayor, Commissioner specifically, we're happy to address anything.
Couple things in going back with the notes, liability issues. I believe this has all been covered, as far as our liability as the city.
Yes, sir.
With those issues. Is that correct, City Attorney?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have, we have received from the developer under this agreement, this proposed agreement, that's before you tonight, an obligation from them to indemnify and defend the city, and maintain insurance to support that indemnification obligation. And as mentioned, I believe, by one of the residents before, we are also to be added as an additional insured under the liability policies for the establishment.
Okay. As far as a reinterpretation of the code?
I think that's just, maybe I read the provision a little bit differently. The commission did enact an ordinance about eight to 10 months ago that provides for these revocable license agreements in areas where there is parallel parking, and I believe the gentleman, you know, his reading of that was that there needed to, I guess, to be future parallel parking. I read it as that the current state has parallel parking, and thus it's eligible for this agreement.
Okay. As far as the disclosures, the disclosures are in the backup. If you'd actually read the backup, they are there. And anyone who has followed the history of our relationship with Mr. Backman will know that he does not always get his way when he comes before us, and there's been plenty of no votes to go along with a few yes votes, I'm sure, along the way. The bicycle rack, is that going to be eliminated?
Not to my knowledge, and I actually think we're adding, are we adding one?
Yes.
Yeah, it's, we're adding, we're adding one as well. Look, and I think someone mentioned this about the Tipperary, certainly, people are gonna be coming to this, to our proposed use in vehicles. We very much, this is a beach city and a beach destination, and they mentioned that a lot of people walk and ride their bikes to other uses within the Cove Shopping Center as obviously very much our desire to become a community establishment.
Okay. With the wraparound that you have on the west portion there, and the concerns about the noise, because this would be unique to any other spot that we have there, where you're actually getting some outside spacing that has the potential to bring noise towards the neighborhood. Can you address that, and what that space is gonna be used for?
Yeah, so it will be an outdoor gathering area. A lot of breweries, as you've seen, have outdoor gaming and activity, cornhole, things of that nature. So it is not intended to be a significant gathering area, a handful of individuals may be utilizing the area in that particular location. No outside televisions, outside entertainment, none of that. If it's, it's not proposed currently, obviously, if it ever were, your code even requires that it be indoor. So we don't envision that noise is going to be a significant component.
Okay. The traffic study, was, there wasn't a need for a traffic study, because it's within a current...
Correct. Your code does not require one. Again, it was evaluated in the backup as a use that's permitted within the code.
And the CRA money facade that's going forward, you are not putting in any additional landscaping, but you're paying it into the fund, is that what my understanding is? But I don't think it has to do with the facade, though, does it?
Well, the improvements that we're receiving are for a lot of the improvements that I had mentioned earlier. It's for the facade improvements, and by the way, it's a match, so it's not, obviously, we have to spend, and the city matches up to a certain dollar amount, and it is for certain improvements. I'm not, are we paying into the fund? No, I'm sorry, I'm asking my... I don't believe we intend in any way of utilizing any of the money that we're receiving from the city to then compensate or put back into a landscaping fund.
No, the city manager showed me something, this is going towards patio, ramps, stairs, retaining wall, railings, et cetera, that has nothing to do with any of the plantings or anything like that, so thank you for clearing that up. The other, another thing, Ms. Maury in the back, can you answer the question about when the last time the Cove was redone, about the loss of any parking spaces?
Hello?
We can't hear you at all, but go ahead. Or you can just walk up here, if you don't mind. Can we make everybody else do it?
Yes, I was here and, of course, managed the Cove Shopping Center project. That project actually resulted in a net gain of parking spots, largely due to the addition of parking spots behind the Admiral Building, between the Admiral Building and the Hillsborough Boulevard area, and I believe, don't quote me on this, but I think that the net gain was 18 spots.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I think that covers the questions, just to cover a couple of things that are misinterpretations. There aren't time limits put on zoning and land uses or variances. Once they're granted, they're granted. Now, when it comes to permitting, that's different. Once a permit is pulled, you have 18 months. If you do not move forward with the work at that point, then it is revocable. But there isn't some, well, you should have put these time limits on these, on any of these zoning and land uses. Is that correct, Mr. City Attorney?
Yeah, once the site plan approved, if the commission, for example, were to approve this site plan today, the developer, the applicant, has up to 18 months to get the permit, which can be further extended once the permit is issued. So that's, that's the answer.
Okay, but as far as the zoning and the land use and variances, once they're granted, they're granted, there is no time limit, they lose those.
Right. The zoning is, the zoning, it's been approved, the land use is the land use, it's been approved. There's been no proposed change by the applicant in that regard, and in order to change either one of those things, there needs to be further legislative action.
Yeah, there seems to be a lot of misinformation floated around, and we talked about the hotel, so we'll talk about it briefly. But all of these things that people have said we should have done and everything, many of those same people were standing here saying, we welcome the hotel, we look forward to it. So now they're coming back in Monday Morning Quarterback again, trying to do an interpretation of what should have been done, when they said none of this at the time the decision was being made. So just for clarity, zoning, land use, variances, you don't put time limits on those types of things, and thank you for clearing that up. One of the problems we have is, what a lot of people don't realize, is once a zoning category is there, if, no matter what is built there, if it's done within code, and there's not a single variance asked, it's gonna have an impact, because you're used to the traffic patterns now without having somebody in those stores, okay? Whatever that, if you've got an empty lot, and there's gonna be a business there, whatever that business is zoned to allow, and the studies have been done, and that's the way it's zoned, it's supposed to be able to handle the capacity, once it goes in, that is gonna change your world a bit. That is gonna happen, without a doubt. You can't say, well, you're changing the use here. No, we're not changing the use. Yes, there might have been some doctor... the use. Yes, there might have been some doctor's offices years ago, or businesses there, but a restaurant's always been allowed there. In a restaurant, excuse me, I, I'm sorry. If you'd like to speak, there's a microphone. You could have done that when the public was time to speak. I'd appreciate it if we don't say anything out from the crowd. Um, but that is gonna, that impacts everybody, and I understand that. We are gonna have to look at what we do at the Cove to change some of these traffic patterns in the Cove neighborhood. Uh, that has to be looked at. This is not the thing that's gonna be the watershed moment that causes a big change over there, as far as adding more traffic. Um, but it should be the watershed moment for us to start looking at what we do with traffic patterns and traffic calming in that neighborhood. And I'm not talking giant roundabouts that just make it a wraparound Speedway for people to kinda get more inertia as they go around the corners. Uh, there, there has to be a better way for us to take a look at this. Those four new parallel parking spaces, those are on your property. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Your client's property? Okay. So, if you say you're losing some in the front, there's no net gain, or we're actually losing spaces, they're using some of their property to give four new spaces. Um, there's gonna be more, more than four employees that work there, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Where do you all think the four employees would park, if we kept it exactly the way it is now? They're gonna park right in those four spaces, right in the front. All right?
Maybe.
That's where they would go. Okay? If not, it would be someone else, but at least a certain amount of those spaces would probably be filled up by the employees. So if they park in the back, uh, that leaves spaces for somebody else in other spots. So it is equal in that aspect of it. Here's my problem with it, though. Um, the point about the alleyway being blocked, and the point about having traffic with the one-way traffic going in and out of there, that is a problem. All we're doing is adding to that. So, so that's an issue for me. Um, that was a point that I didn't really grasp at first, but now looking at that, that's gonna be a problem. Um, I do have a problem with the wraparound, and the fact that we are now breaking the barrier that's always been a natural kind of noise pattern. Um, I am concerned about cornhole or anything else that's gonna be played over there on the side that's gonna add more noise to the neighborhood, so I am worried about that. Um, I do, I will say this, I think this is a great addition to the Cove, and they've done an outstanding job with what they wanna put in there, and, and I'm, I appreciate that. But I, I clearly have some concerns, uh, moving forward on some of this. Um, the dumpster area in the back, the dumpster enclosure, can you go a little more into detail on what you're requesting with that?
So, the, the dumpster, if you look, it's in the bottom right-hand side of the screen, in the far corner, also in the alley. It's got swing doors. Um, not, I'm gonna actually ask the architect who designed it to maybe give you a little bit more explanation.
Good evening. Steve Cohen, architect. Where we did with the dumpsters to work with the city's, uh, sanitation department, and the problem is that everyone back there just has their basic dumpster stuck in the alleyway, and they didn't wanna see that. So we created an enclosed area where they can walk on the side, so the doors don't get open unless the, uh, the sanitation truck is gonna be there to take it out. They have employees that are gonna go back in and just make sure it gets pushed in and washed down. It's set up per the codes, uh, for Hotel and Restaurant Commission, that, uh, we have a cleanout, a drain, and hot water at that location, so they don't have the odor of this back there now from some of the other restaurants. So this was intentional, it fits perfectly, and it's not with any public right of way. The gates swing out once or twice a week, they close them up, and then the traffic keeps flowing through the area. That's gonna occur no matter what happens, whether we're there or any other business. The traffic is a one-way traffic with a 15-foot easement. So you're gonna have the time when a dump, uh, sanitation truck's gonna come by, pick up, and move on. People are gonna have to wait a couple minutes while it goes. And I've seen cars driving through the alleyway as well, not just, uh, delivery trucks and everything, when they come around on the backside. The other thing I wanna let you know is that we've increased the landscape. And if you went by there six months ago, when we, we were the first architects for the project that was, that went, became defunct, and, uh, the officials picked it up. When we did this, the city was going in, and they were continuing the walkway, which the owner of that building would not pay for their share, so it was in disarray. So now we created an even path where handicapped people can come off of the Southeast 15th. We have a ramp going up, so they can come through and around, and we have two access points on that ramp. We have one at the north end and one at the south end, so they can come in, and we have steps as well. As you go down, we did another ramp to get back out to the parking lot. On the north, I'm sorry, yes, the northeast corner. You can see that landscape area where we have the bike racks in there. That is all newly created to make it easier for people to access the property from either direction, because before, you did not have that accessibility, because the pavers that they put in stopped prior to this, at the point of the way this building ended.
Okay.
So we've created a nice image. We created covered areas so people can walk in. Right now, if you go there and it's raining, you have no place to hide from the rain. The, of course, now the stores have a large enough warning. People can come walk up here, and they don't get wet going across the whole front of the property in a rainstorm. So it's, it's accessible to everybody. It, it creates an atmosphere for people to sit down, relax, have a drink. And actually, the west side is more passive activities. It's just gonna be some chairs out there, you know, with maybe a game or two, but nothing, we're creating, there might be eight or 10 people in that area at the most. It's not where you're gonna have, uh, a lot of people with games out there, making noise, and subtle music going on on the other side inside the building, but nothing in that area at all.
With those 10 people on that side of the building, how does that affect the traffic pattern, if I'm pushing a stroller and getting into the?
It doesn't. We left a five-foot clear path.
Okay.
Same width of a si, of a standard sidewalk. You have a five-width clear pass through that whole area. And you can see where we show chairs on the outside and on the inside, on the north side, where it's all accessible. We have seven feet of passageway, just for, uh, people coming to the property and walking around.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Miller?
I wanted to ask the architect something, if I may. Um, I'll make a statement first. Um, when I first saw what this building looks like, compared to what I've been looking at for the last eight years or more, I, I wanted this. I thought this would be a great addition. I truly, I think this is a great addition. And I've talked to a number of people, uh, that live in the Cove area, and they liked the idea of a brew, brewery there, where, you know, local, local brew.
Right.
On the other side of the coin, I do drive in there probably every single day, and I see cars in their parking spot. So I have, um, I have some mixed emotion about losing parking spaces. So my question is this, but I'm gonna make another statement. It's my understanding that at near the S-curve, the brews room also understands how people like to sit outside. And given their circumstances, what they've gone through is, they're gonna take their exterior walls and move them in, so their patrons can be sitting outside. Would it be possible for this to be redrawn in such a manner that walls could be brought in on the north side of the building, leaving the parking spaces there, and still have a brewery and parking spaces with a little more innovative design based on lack of parking in the parking lot?
The problem we find with that is that you're not gonna gain enough space and landscape area there with, for people to use. You, you're only, you're losing roughly nine feet of parking, of, of the parking space. That creates the whole atmosphere of what we're creating here. That creates the walkways. This also makes it much more easily accessible for handicapped, as we have ramps, uh, two points there to come into the property. Right now, there are no ramps there at all to tie in. So we're creating a whole system for ADA accessibility for people. Even people who.
And we're losing four to five spots.
But you're not really losing, we gained the four in the back. We didn't take away the four. We added four to the rear of the property.
My concern was, I thought at least we'd have some positive comments from the public, but I count 13 that were not positive. Uh, so I'm, I'm, I, I looked at that picture originally, and I was very much for this. Then I had some reservations as I drove by many times. Then I realized that we got the revocable license agreement and other factors like that. Um, a case was made that parking around the back is not equivalent to parking in the front. Um, and I thought, boy, that was a win. We really net, didn't lose any spaces.
Right.
But then we put in employees in the place.
Well, you're gonna have employees on all the businesses.
Yes, it is gonna be, right, yeah.
We're not doing anything that no one else is doing. There's no way of us.
Correct.
Creating additional parking, because it's owned a city-owned lot. So at one point, maybe the city's gonna come in and do a two-level parking structure across the front, and create more parking, and maybe charge for it. You know, because most cities now are doing that, because they want that downtown redevelopment, and they wanna create an area where people can go and enjoy themselves, and not just shop, eat, drink, and be merry the whole time. With this concept, that's worked for you.
Okay, so basically, my idea of, uh, potentially moving the ex, outer wall, the north side in.
Right.
Doesn't make any sense to you?
It, it doesn't at that point, because we, that's basically, it's almost all walkway. We have our doors from the stair going out there, so there's no seating in that area at all. If you look at our site plan, we have absolutely no seating, except for a couple tables at the, at the northeast, uh, northwest corner. There's nothing all along, all the way back from the south property line, all the way up to about, uh, the whole distance there is probably, uh, 25 feet. So approximately 75 feet is just open space to walk.
And there was some talk about the tables being up against the, the driveway, but now there's other talk about bringing the tables closer to the.
We'll put the chairs, tables and chairs. We're gonna keep the same amount of walkway. We'll put the chairs either to the north side of the property line, on the north side.
I think that's the only.
Or to the east, or to the building in the south.
I think the south side is the only way it makes sense to me.
It's the material, because the people are still gonna be able to sit there and still have a wide enough walkway, create a nice space to walk through. A mother and child can go there with a stroller.
I think if you put them on the, uh, south side of that walkway, you'd be feeling like you're walking through a restaurant. So it would have to be the north side, might be. I'm still not convinced at this point.
Commissioner, if you can finish.
One other question, one of those, we did do that on the second floor. We created, we came back five, six feet under the existing structure, so we could create an open space. So it doesn't look like the building coming straight down, and there's no visibility. We have open space with fresh air, with the doors moved back in. On the first floor, we don't have enough space, because that stairwell's there, and we're using that stairwell that's existing. The second stair and the elevator, we pulled out, we moved it to the east corner, northeast corner of the property.
Okay, so you gave me some.
Yes.
Structural reasons why we couldn't go in.
Sure.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions?
No.
No, thank you. Commissioner, any other comments? Commissioner Grossky?
Um, just a couple follow-ups. Just please confirm that there's no variances with this project. I heard that term a couple times during the, the public portion, and, and everyone knows I'm a stickler for variances, and it has a different, a different standard, a different burden to it, but, um, I didn't read any variance requests in my backup material. I just wanna confirm that there's no variances.
Yeah, that's right. There are no variances. It's part of the applications that are before you tonight.
And then, um, I do wanna disclose, you know, I have talked to the applicant before tonight. Um, it's a very intensive project, obviously, and one of the things that we spoke about was policing this, this public area. How do you, how, how, how do you envision this area being policed, so that the public, um, because it is a non-exclusive license, that the public has the same right to sit there as a patron of the restaurant or brewery, um, that that public right is not infringed?
Yeah, and, and I, I think it's almost the opposite of that. We have zero intention of policing this, as is written into the staff report and into the revocable license agreement. Everyone's welcome. Obviously, any member, whether it's a patron of the establishment, or a member of the public that's unruly or disorderly, would be asked to leave, but, you know, the, the authorities would be called. But other than that, as I said during my presentation, we want as, as many people to create a buzz, to create a vibrancy for this particular area. That's exactly why we made the request, and why, um, you, you see the design that's before you, is to bring people into this area.
You know, the, the initial iteration of this project didn't have the four parking spaces in the back. That was only after comments, uh, I think with, you know, myself and my, my colleagues, that those four spaces came in, into play. So we're, we're losing four in the front and four in the back. And, and my personal opinion is those four spaces aren't going to make or break this project. If four spaces is going to make or break a project, then we have a much bigger problem than one establishment in the, in the Cove. We have a dilapidated building there, and have had that building dilapidated for a long period of time, and this is a welcome addition. Deerfield Beach needs this type of, uh, establishment in our city. We need this brewery, um, there. This is something that we keep talking about, you know, developing and progressing, progressing our city forward. This is absolutely the way, uh, that we do it. Are there parking challenges in the Cove? Absolutely there are. But I respectfully suggest that it's very, very rare that you go to the Cove, that you cannot find any parking space. You may not find the parking space you want, or close to where you are going, um, but it's very rare that you can't find any space at all. So the four parking spaces, to me, is just kind of a red herring, to be honest with you. Um, I, I would have some, some concerns with the alleyway, you know, picking up the garbage and the one-way aspect to the traffic. I, I suspect you'll work with, uh, our, our environmental services people to make sure that that stays open as, as long as possible. The first thing and, and suggestion that I heard tonight was the folks that do come out of there will be taking the left or the right onto 15th Avenue. Um, if you can talk to your client about putting in or paying for speed tables on there, and I didn't mention this to you before, because tonight's the first time I heard about it, uh, that would be a welcome addition for me. Uh, but I think at the end of the day, this is a project, despite some flaws, is in the overall, um, beneficial of the city of Deerfield Beach. And with respect to the public policy aspect of this, let me touch on that for a second. Um, it is within our purview, as the city commission, to deem the increased walkability as a public purpose. Yes, you are losing parking spaces in the front, but you are making this more walkable. You're making ADA compliant. You're making it more pedestrian-friendly. So that's what we're trying to seek, is to make the Cove more pedestrian-friendly, not just for this business, but for all businesses that are in that entire area. So the more business that I think that this establishment does, the overflow is going to walk and go to the other establishments that are around there as well. So I think it's a trickle-down effect that will be very good to the city of Deerfield Beach, in this particular center. So I think we are well within our right to deem it a public policy to change, uh, the front, or the northern, um, facade to, uh, more walkability than the parking that currently exists there. So if you can talk to your client about some speed hums, uh, while you're evaluating all my other colleagues' questions, I would appreciate it. But I'm gonna support this at the end of the day.
Thank you. May I, may I make one point in response to something you had said earlier? While Mr. Cohen is speaking, I was, I was talking to my client, and Mr. Cohen mentioned something as well about the western side of the property. A, a lot of these breweries, being successful, have these leisurely activities, um, that are being utilized, you know, games, as I mentioned, like cornhole and others. Um, it is still the intent to utilize them. They could maybe be a little bit more internalized. We don't believe that it is going to be any sort of issue or problem, as Mr. Cohen mentioned, on the west side. So we'd certainly prefer that there is not a restriction, but if it is a significant concern of the commission or of the residents, it is certainly something that we will agree, in that particular area, especially on the outside space, to restrict from, you know, those types of leisure, leisurely activities.
Commissioner, uh, Commissioner Miller?
You, um, that's what I wanted to talk about, the west side, again. Um, I, I know the person that lives the first house on 15th Avenue, past the alley. Um, I, I think any activity, cornhole or anything else, uh, after dark, would be not a positive to the, to the neighborhood. Uh, it'd be fun to do if you're a patron and wanted to play it, but it's like in, in a neighborhood that's kinda shutting down.
Sure.
And I, in the rendering, I don't see many bike racks. I envision this as a, a bike-friendly destination for people that live in the Cove, especially knowing the parking and everything else.
Absolutely, sure.
But I mean, uh, is there bike racks that I don't see, or they're just not drawn in, or are we gonna do anything about that? And, and can we restrict the outdoor activity on the west side of the building, and the south side? I mean, that's an alley, but I mean, I've had people complain to me about the back of the Tipperary. Um, apparently, that's where smokers, I, I don't know, but might be where people smoke and have a drink just, just east of this building, and the neighbors can hear that.
Uh, sure. Commissioner, I would defer to, to your city attorney, but I'm sure we can offer up and, and agree to a condition of approval, that there would be no outdoor activities on the west and south sides of, of the building?
Maybe add some bike racks?
Yeah, I think.
I don't see many here.
If, if that's the commission's desire, we, we can craft a motion accordingly and work on, you know, I'm confident we can work on the language, if that's the direction the commission wants.
Well, I, it does, the west side is into a neighborhood, and, um, I'd like to restrict the outdoor activity that butts the neighborhood.
Um, a, a couple points to, to Commissioner Miller's question. So, so currently, there is a bike rack, uh, located in, in this area here, the new landscape area that, uh, Mr. Cohen pointed out.
That's the east by the Tipperary.
Yeah, correct. Between, it's, it's just adjacent to the building, but, uh, adjacent to the Tipperary. And then we believe and will. And then, we believe and will work with city staff, but we probably could accommodate another one somewhere generally down in this area here.
I think that would be wise.
Sure, absolutely. And as it relates to the outdoor activity restriction, and almost to the point that you had raised, Commissioner Miller, could we agree to maybe, after a certain point?
Time?
Seven, 7:00 PM or something along those lines?
Or 8:00 PM or something like that? I would like to see something like that.
Sure, okay.
I hope my fellow commissioners would concede that the outdoor activity right against the neighborhood might not be a positive. And the extra bike rack, I think, would be a positive, okay?
Do you want to address the willingness to work on some traffic calming?
Let me clarify, and then I'll talk to my client. Where, are we talking, like, in the alley? Where?
It wants to go down 15th Avenue. Right fifteen.
Out, so to this, just, I just want to be clear, to the, to the south of the roundabout on 15th? As if vehicles were taking a left out, is that?
Yes.
Okay.
I believe that's what was implied. But even that's, there's no guarantee, I don't want to get into that, because that's tricky. Commissioner Miller?
Yeah, I'm going to ask if, with this revocable license agreement, if we take away the parking spaces, then they build the structure with the canopy and the railings, but then they violate the agreement. It's my, and we can revoke it. Does that mean it'll go back to be in parking spaces, and they'll absorb the cost of that? So maybe, maybe I don't understand everything, maybe you could help me with that.
Sure.
So if they violate the agreement, does that mean it would revert back to, and they will pay for it going back to be in parking spaces?
If the, under the proposed agreement before you, if the developer or the developer's successors violate the agreement triggering the termination clause, the developer has the obligation to restore the property to its original condition, or as otherwise directed by the commission. For example, you may like some of the features that stay, but you want the parking back, so the agreement contemplates that concept of you being able to
Maybe the overhang, but-
direct the applicant to remove all or portions of the improvements that they are putting on the property. Should they fail to do so within 90 days of written notice, the city also has the ability to go, not, to access their property, do the removal ourselves, draw on the secure, the cash bond that's provided to the city, and then, if any additional money is needed, of course, we would, we would seek that from the developer under the agreement.
Sorry, I apologize, did the city attorney answer the question?
He did about the revocable.
Yeah, this agreement provides a significant amount of protection in that regard. As it relates to the speed hump, or table, or something along those lines, we're just looking at it a little bit closer. It appears, I was just out there today, but it appears as you're exiting the alley, there's a raised median, landscape median, and it's channelized to keep everyone turning right. However, I understand the concern of maybe going out, going around the roundabout, whatever. We could certainly, it's in the public right of way, I guess our preference would be to maybe pay into a fund for a speed hump or something along those lines?
Yeah, one of the things that muddies this up is the exact location where it'd be, that's a dedicated, the city manager's reminded me, it's a dedicated evacuation route. But, but yes, paying into something that would allow for traffic calming to help that neighborhood would certainly be more appropriate than saying, "We want you to pay for a specific spot right there."
Right.
Because it doesn't make sense there, that would make more sense. Look, I was a hard no on this project because of the loss of the four spaces. You've reinstated that, but the alleyway directional is a bit of an issue for me. But I think Commissioner Drosky's made a pretty compelling argument on this. I appreciate you trying to work with us on it. I definitely think if, if this is approved, restrictions need to be put on the outdoor activities on that western portion there.
And western and southern? The back alley?
Yes.
And extra bike rack? Extra bike rack?
Yes, yes, sir.
Commissioner?
Considering that there's a revocable clause in this, I would make a motion to approve.
Just for clarification, is this the motion?
Both.
Well, first, the item, the first item is the site plan item, so that's item three, not 3A. I just want to clarify that the motion to approve is with the stipulation that you mentioned before about the restriction on the outdoor space, or not, is that part of your motion?
The outdoor?
The restriction on the use of the west-side outdoor space?
Seven thirty, eight o'clock?
Give me a time, because, and the reason I say that is because we're going to have to draft, you know-
When does the sun go down in the summer? Seven, eight? Nine? Nine? Nine o'clock? Make it, make it, I'd say eight, I'll talk to my, I say eight, eight-thirty?
Okay, so your motion is to approve the site plan
With restriction on outdoor activity?
With the stipulation that there be restriction on activities in the west side, out, the west-side outdoor space, after 8:00 PM?
Eight-thirty.
After eight-thirty PM?
All right, eight o'clock, go with eight o'clock.
All right, so there, that's the motion.
And an extra bike rack? With an extra bike rack?
Addition to the, in addition to the bike rack they're putting in?
Yeah, addition, they got one on the east side, I want one on the west side.
All right, just, Mr. Bachman, did you hear that last point?
That's all right.
Additional bike rack you're going to put in, right?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
In addition to the one you're putting in?
Yeah.
Second one.
And if I can, just to clarify, based on the design, we're talking outdoor leisurely activities, correct? Like the games and things of that nature?
Cornball, ball, cornhole.
Sure. Okay, understood.
And, and an extra bike rack on the west side?
Yes, sir, yes. So it'd be one on the northeast?
Yeah, and one on the west.
And one on the southwest?
Yeah.
Okay.
That'd be my motion, with those additions. And which, we want to put a number on the traffic calming? No.
If you're going to put it together, you better put, get it in there now. So whatever you, however you're going to do this, is not, make it as clear as mud here. Let's make it crystal clear what we're expecting.
I'm not sure about the traffic calming, so. To me, I heard concerns about traffic calming, but that just has to do with more traffic, not less. I don't think one restaurant is responsible for the traffic in the neighborhood, but that's just me.
If it would please Mayor Gans, City Commissioner, I would like to have Mr. Good come up just to address some of the concerns that he may have from a safety standpoint, not only for evacuation routes, but even for public safety. Thank you. Because he's working on some ideas in that area. Because whatever we do on 15th, we'll have to do it on 12th, because all we'll be doing is just placing it from one location to another.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioner, Thomas Good, environmental services director. So one of the things that we're challenged with whenever we start talking about traffic calming is, is that whenever we put in physical devices to slow the traffic down, it works, but then it does require, or it redirects traffic into other parts of the community. And so there are other options we may be able to look at that doesn't require necessarily all the physical barriers that would cause a car to bump. But there are other things that you can do to create a traffic visual, where you can slow the vehicles down, like what they call cha-chains, or maybe put like a little center island sometimes in these things. But we currently are looking at that, because the Cove, we know, has a lot of traffic issues in regards to, you know, the open access, and the Cove being where it is, and federal highway being where it is, and things of that nature. So we're always concerned about when we put these things in, also about public safety. Again, you know, if you put so many of them in there, then you've got response time issues and things like that. So we're, we're always trying to place them in the right places, if we do place traffic calming devices.
Okay. If they were to contribute to a fund, to help put in some traffic calming, what is the estimated cost that would be appropriate to put in some speed tables in certain areas within the Cove neighborhood? Because, here's the point, we need a solid dollar amount to see if they would commit to it. That's what we need, I don't want to say, "Yeah, they'll throw something to it, and I get a dollar out of it." So that's what I'm looking for, I'm sorry, Tom.
Considering some of the options that would be available to us, maybe about $10,000 would be appropriate?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Bachman? Is that part of your motion, or do you want to keep that in or out?
The traffic calming wasn't a big part of my motion, but I'd like to see what they say, and...
So obviously, this one's a little bit difficult. We tend to agree with some of the comments that remain, that we're not causing all the traffic out there. In the homework that I do for other projects, I don't have a specific dollar amount. And the number that comes to mind from this situation, whatever they may be, there are a variety of options, tabletops, speed humps, speed bumps, things of that nature, they all vary in price, from what I understand, somewhere between $1,500, $2,500, $3,000. So I think your city engineer just threw out a number of $10,000. We'd be willing to contribute to $5,000 of that to offer what would hopefully be a couple, a few, traffic calming options.
Okay.
I'd like to amend my motion to add that, take advantage of this generous offer, to add stipulation that the applicant would add $5,000 to help with the traffic calming in the area of his restaurant.
Okay.
Do you want, you want me to restate it for you?
I want bike racks, I want...
All right, so, so there's a, so, okay, so there's a motion on the floor on item three. This is the site plan item for the Cove Brewery. There's a motion for approval with the following three conditions. One, there'd be a restriction on leisurely activities in the west-side outdoor space past 8:00 PM. Two, an additional bike rack above the bike rack that is in your site plan will be installed on the west side of the property. And three, the applicant has volunteered to contribute $5,000 to fund a traffic calming measure to support the Cove neighborhood. Is that accurate?
That sums it up.
Okay.
My, my motion.
That's the motion, we have a second, Commissioner Drosky before a call.
I was just reminded that, you know, our noise ordinance goes till nine. I mean, I don't, if you want to do it earlier, you know, just know that carving out an exception, that the rest of the city doesn't have to adhere to.
With that in mind, I could change the 8:00 PM to 9:00 PM.
Well, I just bring that as part of the debate.
Well, I think that's one of the concerns, it's noise, and it's got to be consistent.
Let's keep to eight. If you're looking for other support, you might want to just keep to eight. Let's just keep that there.
All right, my original motion was stated a moment ago.
Thank you for the point, but, okay. We have roll call, please.
Commissioner Drosky?
Yes.
Commissioner Parnas?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Battle?
Yes.
Mayor Gans?
Yes. Thank you.
Just a reminder, I already read the title, but the next item is 3A, is the companion item for the revocable license.
Make a motion to approve 3A.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Drosky?
Yes.
Commissioner Parnas?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Battle?
Yes.
Mayor Gans?
Yes.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is item number four. It's the second reading of the ordinance on the city commission of the city of Deerfield Beach, Florida, amending chapter 66, Traffic and Vehicles, Article 6, Vehicle Weight Limits of the City Code of Ordinances by creating section 66-260, Cost Recovery for Damage to Tubular Delineators on City Streets, Roadways, Highways, or Rights of Way. Authorizing the city to recover any cost for damage to tubular delineators, authorizing the city to provide signage indicating such minimum amounts.
Any city manager?
Thank you, Mayor Gans. Just quickly, for the city commission, again, this is dealing with southwest 12th Avenue, just along Public Distribution Center, where the divertor road from 10th Street goes around to the Newport Center. We've had a lot of damage from tractor-trailers, and what we're requesting is just more teeth to the enforcement of it, due to the fact that the fines are not enough, and truck drivers continue to park there regardless of getting a non-moving violation ticket from Broward Sheriff's Office. Thank you.
Anyone from the public here to comment on item number four?
Katie Freitag, 418 Southeast 2nd Street. I didn't do enough research on this topic, but I do believe that this is something that needs to be taken care of throughout the entire city, not just 12th Avenue. For example, I know that on my street, it says, "No heavy trucks," yet the trash trucks, the recycle trucks, everybody cuts the curb on my street and completely annihilates the curb every time. This is the second time I have to go to Tom Good and have him replace the curb. It is not just city trucks, it is school buses that are not supposed to be on my street, it is construction trucks for a house that's being built right around the corner from me on 5th Avenue, that those construction trucks are not supposed to be on my street, yet they all continually do, and they all continually cut the curb at 4th Avenue and 2nd Street. So if we can make sure that it is straight across the board, and we can get some policing out there, that I would appreciate it.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Let me close it to the public, then. This is specific to this area, but it is something that we can look at for that area as well. It'd have to be an additional item, though. Staff comments? No, commission?
I think Commissioner, for number two, wants to make a motion to approve. I'm speaking for them.
Yes, I would like to make a motion to approve.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, we have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Drosky?
Yes.
Commissioner Parnas?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Battle?
Yes.
Mayor Gans?
Yes.
Next item, item number five on the agenda is an ordinance of the city commission of the city of Deerfield Beach, Florida, amending chapter 18, Businesses, Article 1, in general of the city code by creating section 18-8, Higher DFB Incentive Program. Establishing the Higher DFB Program to encourage the hiring and retention of Deerfield Beach residents by businesses within the city, providing applicant eligibility requirements, requiring commission approval of incentive awards greater than $30,000, and this is second reading.
City manager?
Mayor Gans, if it would please the city commission, since Vice Mayor Battle is having a speaking issue tonight due to her health, would it be okay to have Ms. Maury come up just to do a brief summary? Because we did talk about this at the last, at the first reading?
That's fine.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, I'm sorry that you're not able to speak, Vice Mayor, but I can sum up your, the program that you're sponsoring. This program is in response to commission comments over the past several, well, I guess, years now, regarding the fact that our qualified targeted industries incentive kind of misses the mark or a community goal of hiring Deerfield Beach residents. While that program does incentivize companies to create high-paying jobs, there's no assurance that those jobs go to Deerfield Beach residents. In fact, as we discussed the last time we met, we're probably, we're very likely that, we're very assured that those jobs don't go to Deerfield Beach residents because of our educational attainment and some of our socio-indicators, like high poverty. So we looked at best practices from around the country to come up with a program that suits our needs in terms of hiring local residents. We looked at best practices from Alpharetta, Georgia, Moreno Valley, California, and then, you know, just really looked at what we needed. And so what we came up with is a program that offers employers $500. If they create a job and offer it to a Deerfield Beach resident, that job has to be a full-time equivalent job. They need to pay at least a minimum of $14 per hour. It needs to be a new job, and we're going to be able to ask the employer to provide payroll so we can verify that those actually are in that new job. We won't be able to offer funding for somebody who cleverly reclassifies a job, or that kind of thing. It's really meant for, you know, total job creation. We've targeted industries that we believe have a career path, so we've specifically omitted- omitted our most retail operations from participating in this program. We feel that we want to, if we're going to spend money on something, we want to have something that, as I say, has a career path, that is, does not have a lot of turnover and that kind of thing, so that somebody, you know, can, this can actually have an impact on the residents, you know, of Deerfield Beach. As I mentioned, it's $500 per job. Based on your input last, at last meeting, we, in the policy, backed that number, the total number of jobs down to 50 per employer. And we have structured it so the employer would get $250 upfront upon making the hire, and then after the employee met, successfully met the six-month probation, they would get the other half of the money, so that, you know, again, we are assured that that employee E. has gotten off of probation and is here to stay.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Miller?
Yeah, I just need one clarification. I think once or twice you said new job. I need clarification. What if somebody worked for my company and somebody retired or left my field and I, I needed somebody new to replace them? Would that qualify if they met? No, so it has to be only...
It has to be a net increase is the way that it's structured right now.
Now, I want to ask the sponsor of the bill. See, if I was to hire, I needed somebody, I might be more incentivized to give a little edge to a Deerfield employee to take the place of somebody retiring from my company than not. So should we really restrict that? Or does it have to be a new, you have to be creating or a brand-new business? I mean, you understand what I'm trying to say? I mean, why restrict it to only brand-new jobs? It might offer more opportunity if, when someone leaves our employee, one where a Deerfield business, to replace them with a Deerfield resident. Little incentive, not a lot, but a qualified Deerfield incentive. So do we want to have that restriction in?
To reflect the similar criteria of the QTI program, QTI only rewards employers for making a net increase in jobs. So that's why this was structured like that.
So, but isn't this original to us? Can't we make it any way we want it?
I mean, this is literally something that we created to meet our needs, so if that's something that you want, that would be...
I think the needs are to have more Deerfield people working in Deerfield and give more jobs to Deerfield residents. So I'm just saying, do we really want that restriction?
Well, in my opinion, yes, we do. There's, because this fits two needs. It fits the needs of making sure that Deerfield Beach residents have an opportunity, and it also gives them, it increases the amount of jobs that we have in the city, which is a good thing. So if we're going to do it, let's kill two birds with one stone.
But how about three birds? If somebody replaces, needs a replacement, somebody retires...
I would hope that someone's been in business for a very long time within the city of Deerfield Beach and goes to replace somebody, that they're going to hire somebody from Deerfield Beach.
Normally, I'd hire the best qualified person regardless of where they live.
I think that's fine. I understand that. Commissioner Parnas?
I understand the need for a new job, and the incentive is to create a new job, not to replace somebody. And I was in business, in the restaurant business. If a cook quit, I'd just hire another cook. My restaurant business increased and I needed a second chef, a new job, then I could apply for this. Is that my understanding?
That's correct.
I approve of that. Thank you.
Commissioner Miller, back to your point. The reason why you're going to put a restriction like that on there is because you have limited amount of funding to give out for this, okay? If any of it goes to an existing job, then we're losing out on that extra job that we got.
I'm sold. I'll second it. I'll second it the way it is.
Okay. Let's open it to the public first. Anyone from the public here to comment on this item?
Dan Hirst, 330 Southeast 19th Avenue. I'll just make the same point I made last time that wasn't answered. Why can't we put into this ordinance an addition that the Department of Economic Development must give a report to the commission every six months on their progress and any successes? Again, it's all about accountability.
Anyone else in the public? Yes, sir.
This is the first I've heard of this, but I think it's a pretty good idea.
I'm sorry, your name, name and address for the record.
This is Dr. Joseph Orley. I think it's a pretty good idea in that, but I just wanted to ask a question about if somebody looks at a job that's going to be presented in Deerfield Beach, but they live in Boca or Delray, and they move to Deerfield because in order to take advantage of this, you have to actually be a Deerfield resident. You'd benefit even, it would benefit the city even more. So you'd get a resident, a taxpayer, and a job. I just thought it sounded pretty good.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you. Anyone else from the public? I'm going to close it to the public, then. I think it's a good thing that we get a report, so we find out the success. More about a measurement tool to determine whether or not we either add more money or we take away money from it if the program's not working. So I think putting in a measurement tool is a good idea.
I'll amend your motion.
Did you make the motion yet?
No.
Do we have a motion yet? City manager?
Yeah, just quickly. This will be part of the Economic Development Department's performance measures in the budget, so you can gladly attach it to this if you'd like, but it's already been considered if it's approved by the City Commission and properly funded during the budget year.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So you're making a motion?
Yes.
I'll second it.
Make that motion for me. I want to make the motion with the report, if you please.
Excellent. Thank you.
Every six months.
Yeah, so our performance measures this year will have a six-month performance evaluation workshop with the City Commission, so that's fine by us.
Second.
Perfect. We have a motion, a second. We have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Drosky?
Yes.
Commissioner Parnas?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Battle?
Yes.
Mayor Gans?
Yes.
Public comment?
Yes, public comment. Persons addressing the commission shall state his or her name and address and may speak for up to three minutes, unless extended for one additional minute by the mayor. All remarks made by the public at the commission meeting on the agenda items shall be addressed to the commission as a body in limited to the subject matter before the commission at that particular time. This is not time for agenda items, this is public comment, so the agenda items shouldn't be discussed during this portion. No comment should be made related to the personal life or personal qualities of any person, and no language which would offend persons of ordinary sensibilities shall be permitted.
Thank you. Anyone signed in? Anyone from the public here to come up?
Katie Faitaug, 418 Southeast 2nd Street. My one comment to the commission and the mayor is, if we could please remain, remember to do our due diligence. When we were discussing the new boutique hotel that's going in over the, behind Comfort Inn, I do believe that one of the commissioners asked the intent of the hotel is to only remain a hotel and not to become a halfway house. And the mayor, the attorney said, that is not our intent. I never heard anybody say, could you put that in writing? If we could get things in writing to make sure that things don't change halfway, you know, two, three years down the way, all of a sudden the boutique hotel isn't working, so they're making it into a halfway house, because that's what he's done with his other locations. If we can be sure to get things like that in writing, it will save us time and troubles down the line.
Thank you.
Freedom Massey, 349 Northeast 19th Avenue. First of all, I want to thank the city for a beautiful Pioneer Day. Everything was wonderful, the parade was great, and the fireworks were great. Then I'd like to give kudos to a new business, fairly new business in Deerfield Beach, Luigi da Roma. I think it was their first year they were on the Ocean Way selling their goods, and they were so generous and gracious to give complimentary food to people who walked up there who were in the parade. So kudos to Luigi da Roma. And also, we have to do something about the vendors. I hate to single out someone by name, so I won't, but there are certain vendors that smoke their product all day and all night. And it is, during the parade, it was horrible. At night, when I was there trying to watch the fireworks, was horrible. My clothing smelled of it, I was breathing it in. There has to be, A, some kind of a limit that, for the people that cook there. In fact, some of the residents even had to call the fire department because it was just constant coming. It's horrible. Or at least put it in a spot where there are no, no homes and no people. But I think we just have to find a way to limit people, like there's those fellows that come with the smoker, that's fine, because they close it off and the smoke is contained in the thing. But these jerk products with this smoke going constantly, please do something about it. Thank you.
Thank you. For the record, I don't think you were referencing calling the vendor a jerk. I think it was the nature of the cooking style.
Hello, everyone. My name is Julie Rodriguez. My address is 150 Southeast 7th Street. It's just very short and sweet. I do enjoy coming to the, these meetings, and I know at the beginning of these meetings, we do address the awards and recognition for people that we honor for what they do to our community. However, I know you guys have probably had a long day. I know I've had a long day. I just think, making a suggestion, maybe we can honor them nine to five, do it at another time? Because when they do, when we sign it this time, from today, from 7:00 to 7:30, talking about the recognition, wonderful. I do honor them, but just wondering if we can do it at a different time. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening. Michael Lubin, 60, Little Harbor Way, Deerfield. I just want to thank the commission and the mayor for a wonderful parade and outstanding fireworks this past weekend. So we really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Okay, one last thing on the Cove parking.
I'm sorry, just your, your name and address again for the record, doctor.
313 Southeast 15 Terrace.
Thank you.
We talked about the Cove before, but I'm just questioning, when will the Cove parking lot be sufficiently lined again so that we actually can see the parking spots? I can't use any of my parking things on my car because they won't, they don't recognize no lines.
Okay.
So it's kind of hard to find out where you're going.
Okay.
Gwen Clark Reed, 1430 Southwest 6th Way, Deerfield Beach. I'd just like to know, what is the schedule for cleaning out drains in District 2? I've received phone calls about the drains up in Alwood Homes, that they don't seem to be getting the same kinds of service that, you know, as it always said, what happens on the beach, but we know the beach is our main attraction. But still, the residents that live in the, in the other areas talk about how the water backs up and the drains are not clean. So if I could get a schedule of knowing when the drains are going to be cleaned and how often they're cleaned, I would appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good evening. David Savinsky, 20, Westbury A. I'm wondering about Hillsborough Avenue, and if, if there's...
Boulevard, you mean?
Boulevard, I'm sorry. Somehow, it seems to be the official racetrack of Deerfield Beach. Is there any way that penalties or fines can be increased in certain regions? There's just a big stretch there where people get up tremendous speeds, and, and I'm just wondering if there's some sort of way they can be slapped on the hands really hard, because the speeds are just unreasonable, really unreasonable.
Thank you. I think a slap on the wallet might work better than slap on the hand.
Glenn Sullivan, 2377 Deer Creek Trail, Deerfield Beach. Since the commission has established that they do get and read the monthly financial reports, I wonder if any of the commissioners can answer a couple of questions on the most recent report. BSO did not submit an invoice for the year until December. And then, with planned expenditures of 6.6 million through, through December, BSO Fire submitted an invoice for 8.8 million. Then in January, BSO submitted an invoice of 4.2 million versus the planned expenditure of 2.2 million. So the total invoiced amount of 12.9 million through January 19 significantly exceeds planned expenditures of 8.8 million by about, by over $4 million. Looking at the remaining unencumbered budget of 13.6 million, it does not look like available funds will support the eight remaining monthly invoices of approximately 2 million, that's been the average in the past, for BSO Fire. Now, I understand city budget planners probably peanut butter-spread the expenditures across the year, but prudent forecasting should have, should have specifically shown where large ticket expenses such as new radios, equipment would be billed. This can alleviate internal, external questions and concerns on potential overspending. I also note that the city has now spent $99,721 in fiscal year 2019 for bank charges on the parking authority. The need to consider raising minimum charges on parking meters was discussed in the past, and the lack of action on the part of the city is, is resulting in unnecessary costs to the taxpayer. Will the city manager take action to alleviate this unnecessary charge?
Marty McGary, 1442 Southeast 6th Street, Deerfield Beach. I have a list maybe this long or this long about all the good things here in Deerfield Beach. So that's why I live here. I love it here. It's my city. That's how I feel about it. And speaking of my neighborhood, which is the Cove, the 15th Avenue Bridge has been out, and the city has come by and put in a, I think, maybe one or two anyway, speed bumps right now to slow the traffic down while that bridge is totally out. Can you give us any kind of an update or status on how that stands right now? I, I hear rumors it is going to be upwards of three, over $3 million to, if we keep it and put it back to or do something with it. There are no sidewalks on it, it's extremely narrow and dangerous. Kids get up there and fish, and, you know, people go straight through from Hillsborough to 10th Street to get out to the Sawgrass and Federal Highway. So it's, it's very, it's used a lot. You know, I know you had a little thing out there counting the number of vehicles that go over that bridge, so a little bit of an update might help, you know, people in that area to see what's going on. So, okay?
Hello. John Slattery, 1455 Southeast 5th Place. Already standing up by the time Marty asked her question, so if I could just ask her a little more specific, can you let us know what's been done to date regarding the 15th Avenue Bridge, and where we are, and what you expect to happen next, and when we might be able to have traffic flowing back through there again?
Dan Hirst, 330 Southeast 19th Avenue. In my travels around town, I have had people ask me for, the citizens actually asked me for updates. Of course, the 15th Avenue Bridge is probably the first one, but some other things that the citizens would love to have some updates on is the recycling audit from Waste Management. Have we had our first one yet? And if so, how did we do? Any update on how the new code enforcement officer that we recently hired at a cost of $110,000 is doing? And any update on the Marine Advisory Board's recommendation to plant more sea oats on the beach to help prevent beach erosion? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public? Not to anybody, I'm going to close it to the public, then. Just, we can get a couple of quick answers on some things. I'm not sure what we can do about the smoke, but it is something we need to consider for vendors, obviously. The Cove parking lot, can we look into having that re-lined?
Yes, so it will be part of the fiscal year 20 recommendation for the Cove parking lot restriping for next year, along with looking at some other just maintenance upkeep within the parking lot, and if you...
That's fiscal year?
Yes, that's fiscal year 20. If I could... If I could, Mr. Good can address both the Alwood Estates and other neighborhoods around the city on the schedule for stormwater drain cleanings, as well as give you an update on 15th Avenue. He has been working on that diligently.
Good evening, Mayor. Commission, Tom Good, Environmental Services Director. So in regards to the schedule for the cleaning of drains in District Two, we are on a schedule. I don't have that information in front of me and I certainly can make that available. I can make one statement, though, about some of the District Two drains in particular. Many of these drains are what they call exfiltration. They do not have a positive discharge to a body of water, which is one of the concerns that we have, and that's one of the things that we're going to be looking at with our master plan. But what happens is that when you have exfiltration trenches, once the, once the ground becomes saturated, it just can't absorb it anymore. And so it'll, it'll look like it's standing water for a little bit longer than normal, but then eventually it will recede. But one of the things we are doing is we're still out there, we're still cleaning them just to make certain that the silt's out and things of that nature. But there is a limitation and we are looking for positive drainage eventually within these districts in order to move the water much more quicker than the way it is today. Are there any questions on that?
No, I would just say that area is, should be a high priority.
Yes, sir.
Some of our stormwater improvements that they do in there because if there is flooding, it literally goes up to the garage doors.
Yes, sir. There are. As 15th Ave Bridge, what we've done to date so far is we've authorized a designer to go out, consultant, to do the inspection, do, do the design. They're a company that has actually done the inspections for our bridge before through the FDOT contracts. We've used the FDOT contract to bring this company on board. Once they do the design, then what'll happen is we'll wind up coming back to this commission again for the construction of that. There is a requirement for us to bring some things up to standard. For instance, the wall that's on there today, it's not, just can't fix it. We have to replace it with a whole brand-new wall in order to bring it up to what the current standards are today. And that's all we're looking to do right now is just to get the wall fixed and get that road open quickly as possible.
Do we have any time for this?
At this point, I'm waiting for the consultant to come back. We're looking for about a 30-day turnaround time, possibly 45 days, for them to come back and tell us what exactly is going to need to be done so that we can put bid documents together. So I, I can give you about a 45-day in terms of the consultant work to be completed.
Okay. City Manager?
Yeah, we'll also keep pressure on FDOT with the local district secretary to try to make sure that the design and any permitting is done quicker than their normal speed for this. And as you know, we do have a little more leeway with FDOT right now.
Yeah, we do. Anything else on that?
No, sir.
Okay. So as far as long-term with that bridge, no decisions have been made. Studies are being done on that. But our, our objective is to get it repaired, to get it open and operational. Anything we can do to expedite that, whatever we can do within legal reasons, calm down. Please do. Please do.
Yes, sir.
Whatever, whatever we have to exhaust to make sure we get it that done and, and open as soon as possible.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Thank you.
I hope that answers that question. As far as BSO and the billing and stuff like that, I encourage staff to reach out to Mr. Sullivan, give him an explanation on that.
Yeah, just quickly, Ms. Teslia will be doing a brief presentation during my administrative comments on the quarterly fiscal year 19 budget tonight, so some of that may be addressed during her presentation, but we'll certainly follow up with Mr. Sullivan.
Okay, great. When can we expect the recycling on it?
I will have Mr. Gressik do a public workshop at the next time. We have had, I believe, two audits. I forget what the percentage is, but there's been some decrease. We're still having issues with multifamily. However, Mr. Gressik and his team are in fact working with management companies of those multifamily areas such as Century Village and some of the apartment buildings. And then as far as the COTs go, I'll also provide an update at the next meeting on that as well.
Okay. And I think that's it.
And at the next one, we'll also, when Mr. Gressik does recycling, we'll talk about code compliance as well because I believe we've apprehended five or six violators of that over the past, since we've implemented that new inspector. Thank you.
Definitely cut down on the complaints that I've gotten. Item number six?
Item number six is a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Deerfield Beach, Florida authorizing execution of an agreement with the Florida Department of Transportation for grant funding for Project 420416-2-58-01 pedestrian crossway improvements at State Road A1A at Northeast 21st Ave and Northeast 2nd Street, providing recevability and effectiveness.
Okay. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor Gans. If I could quickly, this is within the Community Redevelopment Agency. If I could have Ms. Maury come down quickly and then also Mr. Good, because this is a local area project with FDOT, so, or local agency partnership, so he can also address concerns. But basically, if you recall, several years ago, there was a project to put in a mast arm at A1A and Ocean Way and 21st, and we thought that would be an eyesore. So we asked FDOT to reallocate those dollars to a crosswalk, something that's more compatible with that area. So, Mr. Good, I'll let you take it from there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. So again, good evening. Tom's Good, Environmental Services Director. This, this project actually has quite a bit of history to it. It started back around 2015 when there was a study looking at A1A basically from the county line to Southeast 7th Street. And the result of that study turned out to be very disruptive to that corridor. And what happened is they reduced the project down to, as the city manager said, a signalized light. And they were only going to put a single mast arm in to cover the entire signalized requirement. When we took a look at the mast arm, the mast arm was, was wider than this here. It was very large. We even asked that it would be presented with colors to see if it would blend. It was still very large. So we were able in 2017 to convince FDOT to accept an alternative, which was to put crosswalks that are stamped, inland road LED lighting and those rapid flashing beacon, pedestrian lights. And that sort of kind of dovetailed what the CRA had already did at eight other locations along that A1A corridor. So this item that is before you today is actually a, accepting a grant, a construction grant of $315,000. Project's actually $336,000. $21,000 will be carried by the city. Now, this project is currently, once, once we reduced it, was turned over to the CRA and CRA's been doing a very fine job of managing this project. Problem is, is that the CRA is not a recognized entity for the State Department to get into any kind of agreements with. So because the city is LAP certified, we, the city, have to take this item on and, and execute the contract. And what the CRA is going to do is they're going to fund the item, but it'll have to transfer through the city. So it comes through the city, we pay for the project, we do the reimbursement with DOT, they pay back the city, the city pay back the CRA, essentially. So the CRA is, is stepped up to come up with a $315,000, which will be reimbursed so that we can get this project finally completed. And this project will be right on the S curve. So, any questions?
My question is, is it, Gil, is there any chance of putting more in further north across from like Tierra East and different areas like that?
We can explore that and approach the DOT. We haven't done that at this point right now. So this right here is a grant project. If anything else is done, I don't think it would be done through a grant. It would probably be through the city or the CRA that would be doing that.
Yeah.
Yeah, actually. Tom might not be aware that actually when we did the first eight in-ground LEDs and the pedestrian beacons, we did try to get an additional set, a sidewalk up by, north of Tierra East in, in response to their request for it. And it was denied by FDOT. They felt that they wanted to limit these to really high pedestrian, high-level pedestrian crosswalks, and so other locations were rejected. Doesn't mean we can't try again.
Let's.
Yes.
That would be great. Thank you. Anyone from the public here to comment on this item?
Glenn Sullivan, 2377 Deer Creek Trail, Deerfield Beach, Florida. I just have a hard time understanding how two crosswalks could cost $336,000. That's $170,000 for a crosswalk. And what really scares me is the fact that the city wants to go out and do more of these and potentially add our cost. So it does say that the city must certify that the cost is reasonable. I guess I can get that with a PRR, Public Records Request, the certification by the city?
I don't have one in my pocket, but if, yeah, that might be, that might be the route.
It's just a question. I apologize for making you speak.
No, not at all. Go right ahead.
Elise Miller Plopkin, 1998, Northeast 7th Street. I just have a question. Is he talking about adding an additional one, like opposite where the Deerfield Cafe is, where the, where the turn is? That you go right in front of the, the Tierra East? Tierra East has the blinking lights there, but I'm wondering if you could have one when you walk across, well, Umberto's is, straight across the S curve, well, where it goes where the pier is, like that area. It's hard to cross where the turn is in front of the pier. I was wondering if there could be one there.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public on this item? I'm going to close it to the public. I guess the point is, can you specific, Ms. Maury, can you tell us exactly where this is going? Obviously, there is some people requesting it in other areas, and there have been quite a bit of people that have requested it, especially after the fatality we had a few years back in the north part of A1A over north of Tierra East. And I'm pretty sure the 30, the, the price tag on it, people would welcome that, the safety in a poorly lit area. As far as actually having that specific document on there, I suppose we can make sure that that's available to the public.
Yes. I feel really passionate about this project myself because I was one of the people that had to meet the family of those people that, that, you know, died on, on A1A. And so, you know, I'm real happy with the positive response from this. So in terms of the price, that is a not-to-exceed amount. We don't know until, of course, you know, we get a firm bid. But two, just keep in mind, it's not just crosswalks. There's a special textured crosswalk that goes in. This is in-ground LED lighting. And then it's a series of four beacons, above-ground beacons that are pedestrian-controlled. So it's not just, you know, paint on a, on a road. And so the specific locations will be right at the intersection of Northeast 2nd Street and State Road A1A. So it'll go from the Wyndham to the Beach Comer, the tourist shop, and then from the Beach Comer across to Flanagan's, and from Flanagan's across to Deerfield Beach Cafe, and from Deerfield Beach Cafe back to the Wyndham. That whole, those four segments now will have those in-ground flashing LEDs.
Good.
Good?
Thank you.
I can make a motion to approve.
We have a motion in a second. We have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Drosky?
Yes.
Commissioner Parnas? Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Battle?
Yes.
Mayor Gans?
Yes.
Next item, item number seven is a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Deerfield Beach authorizing the execution of inter-local agreement with Deerfield Beach Community Redevelopment Agency for reimbursement for pedestrian improvements on State Road A1A at Northeast 21st Ave and 2nd Street Crosswalk pursuant to an FDOT LAP agreement for Project FM 420416-2-58-01.
So this is the partner resolution for this?
Yes, this is the inter-local agreement that, between the CRA and the city that provides for the reimbursement when the city gets the money. That's my understanding.
Okay. Anyone from the public here to comment on this item? I see anybody come forward. I'm going to close it to the public.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. We have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Drosky?
Yes.
Commissioner Parnas? Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Battle?
Yes.
Mayor Gans?
Yes.
Next item, item number eight is a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Deerfield Beach, Florida approving the settlement of the claims against the city and former employee Charles DeBrusco and the litigation-styled Betty Jean Crump versus City of Deerfield Beach, L, authorizing execution of documents necessary to effectuate the settlement. This is the case that, that has been discussed a number of times in executive sessions with the committee. There was a recent mediation. I believe we had an executive session before the mediation and we, you have spoken to the city attorney's office after the mediation, following that, the result of the mediation and which resulted in the settlement agreement before you today and the terms before you today. I do have my colleague, Michael Cantor, here who handled the litigation along with my partner, Brett Schneider, to answer any questions. I would just remind you just the details of the litigation itself and how much you get into those details. We are not settled yet and nothing is final until we sign, you know, an executed settlement agreement and follow-through with those terms.
Anyone from the public here to comment on this item?
Glenn Sullivan, 2377 Deer Creek Trail, Deerfield Beach. So I'm not against the settlement. I think we're probably getting off easy. But as a taxpayer, I am concerned with the way the city is settling this issue. The proportion of settlement costs on the side of the city is significantly lopsided with the city paying 90%, 95% of the settlement along with attorney fees. The complaint identified known sexual harassment occurring prior to the sexual battery identified in the complaint. It is alleged that human resources in the complainant's immediate manager were told, but nothing was done. After the sexual battery occurred, again, the complaint allegedly notified human resources and nothing was done. The complaint also states that the alleged perpetrator's supervisor knew of the harassment, but did nothing. This all occurred prior to 2015, but the alleged perpetrator was still in the employ of the city, I believe as of December 17. So upon conclusion of the settlement and at the commission meeting following the settlement, the city owes the taxpayers a discussion on the following. Did the city ever complete an internal investigation into the sexual harassment claims and what were the results? What actions were taken by the city to overcome this cancer in the organization?
Thank you. Anyone else in the public?
Katie Fire Talk, 418 Southeast 2nd Street. In reviewing the backup document and also going online to review all of the complaints, it seemed to me that I, for one, would prefer us to take it to trial. I think it's a he said versus she said situation. No real specific proof was ever provided by the, by Ms. Betty. And I really think that we really need to relook at this. I know that it is not a precedent we want to set, we want to set, that we are settling just to be settling. I would prefer us to actually take it to court and actually have a real trial so we can actually prove what is the real truth in this. The fact that she waited two years to bring it to the commission just to get it right underneath the timetable. I think there's a reason that she didn't call the police that day. There's a reason she didn't call the police the next day. There's a reason she waited almost two years to bring this up and bring the suit. I'm sorry, there's, I find some fishy business there.
Dan Hurst, 330 Southeast 19th Avenue. I understand the cost of litigation and how the cost of litigation would have been much more than $50,000, but my questions are specifically for the city attorney. I would like you, if you have this information handy, to let us know what were the legal fees that the city incurred in this case? And also, did the city pay... And also, did the city pay any of Mr. Charlie DeBrusco's attorney's fee? And if the answer is yes, how much did the city pay of Mr. Charlie DeBrusco's attorney's fee? Thank you.
Hello. John Slattery, 1455 Southeast 5th Place. I think you're probably doing the right thing by settling this and not dragging out the cost on this anymore. I think that the fact that this was an ongoing, apparently, situation with this gentleman defending women, and it's, apparently, also inflicted this upon his own supervisor, seems to be a massive failure of management not to stop this sooner and let this fellow go on being employed. Please, if there's any more of this, please nip it in the bud ahead of time so we don't have to keep going through this. It just really reflects poorly on city management that these are ongoing issues, and it's costing us taxpayers' money to deal with these things after the fact, when they're not addressed, when they occur.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Not seeing anybody else come forward. I'm going to close it to the public. Commission comments?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
We have a motion. Looking for a second?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. We have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Drosky?
Yes.
Commissioner Parnas?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Battle?
Yes.
Mayor Gantz?
Yes.
After the settlement, all of the public records regarding it and any discussions it will have become public record at that point. Correct.
Yes, upon conclusion of the litigation, which in this case, if it does settle and both parties execute the settlement agreement and make the required payment, that would be accurate. The claims filed becomes available to the public, yes.
Okay. Thank you. Number nine?
Item number nine is a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Deerfield Beach, Florida approving a community participation grant to the Deerfield Beach Economic Development Council in the amount of $50,000, authorizing execution of a grant agreement, providing an effective date.
Commission comments? City Manager?
Just quickly, I believe the applicant is here. Mr. Morantz, who's the executive director, can answer any questions from their perspective and has economic development here that can answer any from ours, or I can, or Mr. Soroka. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Morantz?
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Vice Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Dave Morantz. Our economic development, Deerfield Beach Economic Development Council's offices are at 10 Fairway Drive here in Deerfield Beach. If it pleases the commission, we have a representative from JM Family who would like to speak on our behalf, and then I'd be happy to answer any questions or add to that if that's okay.
That's great. Thank you.
Lisa Davis, representing JM Family Enterprises at 100 Jim Ryan Boulevard. Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Commissioners, on behalf of JM Family Enterprises, Colm Brown, our Chairman of the Board, Brent Burns, our President and CEO, we're asking that you cast a positive vote for the Deerfield Beach Economic Development Council Community Participation Grant and join JM Family as a partner of the Deerfield Beach EDC. JM Family has been a partner of the DB EDC since its inception, funding the seed money to help with our implementation, as well as providing Rick Jordan, our Director of Construction and Real Estate, as a member of the EDC's Executive Committee. JM Family actively participates in a number of public-private partnerships for economic development, including the Greater Fort Lauderdale Alliance. A positive vote and partnership with the city will, one, help eliminate concerns and challenges about unknown private sector motives, and, two, effectively market our community to companies outside our region who aren't familiar with JM Family or the other 17 private member EDC partners. Your vote for this grant will support a three-pronged approach to the EDC's overall marketing strategy. One, retention activities, making it easier for businesses to prosper. Recruitment, recruiting specific businesses through trade associations and targeted marketing campaigns. And three, general marketing that highlights Deerfield Beach as a business destination. The EDC has created a forum where C-level executives have come together to share their ideas, passions, and commitment for the long-term growth of our community. They formed a network of like-minded executives who are happy and available to speak with anyone who's considering making Deerfield Beach their home. The EDC is poised to implement the strategies agreed upon to bring high-quality job growth and help brand the city of Deerfield Beach as a business destination. With your positive vote, the city will be joining JM Family in our commitment, investment, and partnership that will help ensure that the DB EDC can continue their remarkable work. Thanks for listening and for your consideration.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Morantz before I open it to the public? Not seeing any. I'm going to open it to the public. Anyone from the public here to comment on this item?
Glenn Sullivan, 2377 Deer Creek Trail, Deerfield Beach, Florida. I believe this expense should be voted down. First of all, the community participation grant application states, "The request for funding shall be considered by the City Commission during the budget approval process." During the budget hearing, the commission discussed a number of grant applications and approved specific grants to specific applications. That's on the website. The EDC was not one of these, nor were others such as those funds granted to the BICs. When will the city follow their own process on grants? The community development and economic development organizations here with the city already perform the same efforts as proposed in this grant package. If the city departments are unable to perform their stated duties, then the use of a subcontract with measurable results should be used in lieu of a grant with no measurable characteristics. The duties in the city organizations can then be cut to allow for the elimination of redundant efforts. The application did not include the tax returns for the previous three years or an audited financial statement as required by the grant-conditioned city policy. Also, there was no itemized breakout to the level to discern if salaries were being included with this grant or what really was being included. Again, I would recommend to note, since it didn't follow the procedures the city has in place.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public?
Dan Hirsch, 330 Southeast 19th Avenue. There are some discrepancies here in the application that I would like to point out to the commission's attention. The corporation, Deerfield Beach Economic Development Council, Inc., filed on March 12, 2018, with the Secretary of State their Florida Not-for-Profit Corporation Annual Report. In that report, the only officer or director listed is David J. Morantz at 9841 Riverside Drive, Coral Springs, Florida, 33071. But yet, in the packet that we were received, there is a glowing list of board of directors, a who's who of Deerfield Beach. And I wonder why none of these board of directors were included in the filing with the Secretary of State's office, which is the most recent filing. The other problems that are apparent here is that the request for a taxpayer ID number was not done until January 22, 2019, but yet the Economic Development Council, this corporation, had been, again, incorporated on September 7, 2017. So that begs the question. The other thing is because the articles were filed on September 7, 2017, there was a failure to provide the 2017 or the 2018 tax return. Isn't, don't we want the public to know who has a seat at the table? I would also like to remind Vice Mayor Battle that you are on record as stating that any entity receiving a grant should provide audited financial statements. Thank you.
Anyone else from the public? I'm going to close it to the public. Mr. Morantz?
I don't know if the commission wishes me to respond to any of those statements. But, and if you'd like me to, I'd be happy to.
Go ahead.
So the, going backwards, the only tax returns that are due, our fiscal year ends in September 2018, and so that is the, that goes from the 2017 tax year. Those tax returns are completed, they've been submitted to our Chairman of the Board. As far as the issuance of a federal tax ID number, that was done immediately upon registration with the state. In fact, for any of you that know, you can't get a bank account until you have a tax ID number. Now, with regard to the recordings, and I have some experience in my banking career, is that you only have to update your records on an annual basis. And so as we apply for the requisite ID numbers, and by the way, our nonprofit status has been approved by the city, our annual report only needs to go to the state once a year. And that's just the way it is. So the optics of the timing of these things is inaccurate. We're 100% in compliance, and I'd be happy to provide any backup material from our independent accounting firm to support all that. With regard to the filing, you know, as many of us here in the community knows, that, you know, it's a chicken or the egg. So we formed as a corporation. We had a, when you find a corporation, it's, we had to put a group of people together to form a board of directors that would ratify bylaws. And, you know, none of those people, when we opened our bank account, had, were part of the board. We gave them an opportunity. That window was closed in April of 2018. The board was formed. They ratified, duly-elected officials were, were appointed, and that's all the record of the backup as well. So the timing was simple. You open up a business account, you get people to step forward to want to participate as board members. They all decided to participate as board members in April, and all the following filings came thereafter. So I don't know if I've addressed all the issues, but I can tell you that we have all the backup to make sure that we've been doing it as we were supposed to. With regard to the work we do, you know, our marketing approach is threefold. We spent a lot of time with a lot of trade associations, the South Florida Manufacturers' Association, the South Florida Technology Alliance, and countless others. We've spent a ton of time looking at the best practices of economic development organizations across the country, and they all have three specific prongs to their marketing approach. First and foremost is retention. We need to get to know the business community here. We need to connect them to each other so they can form a consensus on what's needed amongst the community. Chief among that is a connectable downtown. But right after that is housing. Right after that, probably most importantly, is the gap between workforce readiness and workforce needs. And we have spent countless amount of hours on talking to trade association, schools of higher education, talking about grants, how we can help the community to bridge that gap. I suspect that many of the people on the commission and many people in the office have had, either got correspondence or heard directly from businesses that we helped just by connecting them to people that can help them out. Look, we are a mission-driven organization. Our mission is to promote Deerfield Beach as a business entity. We are not membership-driven. In fact, if you look at your backup and you look at the companies that are on there, they all have a number of things in common. One, they've been here a long time. Two, they've shown over a long period of time a track record where they've given back to the community and care about the community, and none of them are listing or even looking at any remediate return on their dollars. They see this as an opportunity to give back to the community to build job growth. Now, as we build job growth, you know, some of the things that got affected are, you know, we all know that, as an example, the value of our residential property is in proportionate to the rest of the county. As we bring quality jobs here, that tax base will increase, the business expansion will increase, and as the property values go up, millage rates by definition go down. There's an inverse proportion. So I wanted to thank the commission for, you know, passing, first, approving the economic development study that was adopted by this very same commission. And one of their strategies is develop the best way to find a private partner in advancing economic development in the, in the city. And I want to thank them for the foresight, and I certainly hope that we can count on your leadership in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. City Manager, you want to address some of the other comments?
Yes. First of all, we absolutely did follow the procedures contained within grant awards. This was scrutinized to the nth degree by the Office of the City Attorney and by staff. Furthermore, if you look in the budget, the Bison Program, Little League, they come out of the Parks and Recreation Department because that is where they belong. In this case, we put it within the Department of Economic Development, which is the place that it belongs because that's who the staff liaison is. As far as redundancy, there is no redundancy between what the city does and what this entity will be doing. While there might be partnerships along the way, as far as trying to attract new businesses here, they're certainly not going to be economic development version 2.0 for the city. So I think that that's just a disingenuous statement to say that our economic development staff hasn't been doing a good job. If you look at what we've done over the past several years, you've seen a remarkable increase in the number of businesses and new residential development, both single-family home and multifamily moving into the city, and their quality developments, like what you just saw tonight with the Cove Brewery. So as far as any other questions, Mayor Gantz, I think I've addressed those. I'm not sure if Mr. Soroka wants to address anything further. Thank you.
Anything for you?
Yeah.
From a legal standpoint, we followed all of our policies on this?
Yeah, on the tax return issue, it does, the policy does say you have to provide a copy of its tax returns for the most three recent years. If the entity has existed for said period, if there has no been tax return filed yet by the entity, we probably wouldn't require that. But it does also require that they agree to provide a tax return for the year in which the funds are received, and that requirement is in the agreement, as is the requirement to have access to certain records. There's an audit right provision, as is the statement of the purpose for the funds in the application. I think that covered it from the resolution.
Look, I've been doing this a long time, sitting up here. Economic development has been something that the city was desperately in need of when I first took office back in 2009, and it's something that everybody that likes to talk about, politics, likes to preach. They don't have any plans, though. They just say, "We need to improve economic development." We came up with a plan. We had a vision to do this. And then one of the best ways to do it was to tap into the natural resources here in the city of Deerfield Beach. And that's some of the finest business minds that we have right here in our own backyard. And that's what we've done. We have a two-pronged approach. We have internal staff that works on economic development, and it's a relatively modest budget when you consider the city of our size and what is at stake for the future of this city. And then we also have the ability to tap into companies like JM Family Enterprises that anyone, not just in the state but in the country, would kill to have in their city limits. We're tapping into these minds that have been leaders in their industries, and they're doing it at, in my opinion, a very discounted cost. It's a relatively small amount of money to give to an organization that the city is going to reap long-term benefits for. Everyone likes to look for these short-term savings but have no vision for the future. This is about long-term economic sustainability for the city of Deerfield Beach, and it's an outstanding approach, and I appreciate all their hard work. And those of us sitting up here, who have had conversations with cities, with businesses outside of the city, inside of the city, who are either new or established within here, know already that this council has already paid dividends.
Thank you, Mayor. And hearing that said, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
I have my light on.
No, you don't.
I don't have it on.
But I'll pretend you do. Go ahead.
I'm sorry. I thought I had my light on. I support this for the following reasons. Anybody that's been an executive knows that headhunters are constantly looking for them. Anybody that's been an executive knows that headhunters are constantly looking for them. Leave your job, I got something better. Well, the same is true of business. We have businesses here in Deerfield. There are people out there who would love to coax them away from Deerfield to their city. We need to be aggressive, not only keeping what businesses we have, but in getting outside businesses to make Deerfield their home. That's what helps the city grow. That's the future of this city, is attracting businesses like JM, which is considered one of the five top companies in this country to work for. There are many cities out there that would love to have JM, and other businesses that we have. So, if we're going to keep business and grow, we need to support the best business minds we have in helping us achieve that. We don't attack things on one front. You want to win? You hit them from all sides you can. This economic council is some of the brightest people we have in Deerfield, in business, that want to help us grow as a city. They're asking for a small amount of money to pay expenses, and I think it's well worth it. And I'd be pleased to make the motion to accept and approve this.
We have a motion.
I'll second it.
All right. We have a motion in a second. We have rule call, please.
Commissioner Drosky?
Yes.
Commissioner Parnas?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Battle?
Yes.
Mayor Gans?
Yes.
Next item is item number nine, resolution of the city commission of the city of Deerfield Beach. Oh, I'm sorry, we just did that. Next item is item number 10, resolution of the city commission of the city of Deerfield Beach, Florida approving conveyance of Broward County-owned parcels located at northeast Third Ave to the city for right-of-way purposes, authorizing the city manager to execute the necessary documents for the conveyance, providing for an effective date.
City manager?
Yes, just quickly. This would be in the annexed area that the city of Deerfield Beach annexed back in 2004. All this is doing is just conveying right-of-way property to the city for sidewalk or other road-related infrastructure maintenance reasons. So, we certainly recommend that you give me the authority to do so. Thank you.
Anyone from the public here to comment on this item? Not seeing anybody come forward. I'm going to close it to the public.
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. We have rule call, please.
Commissioner Drosky?
Yes.
Commissioner Parnas?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Battle?
Yes.
Mayor Gans?
Yes.
Next item is item number 11, resolution of the city commission of the city of Deerfield Beach, Florida approving a special event permit application submitted by the Rotary Club for the special event entitled Italian Festival on the Beach, taking place at 2096 Northeast Second Street in Deerfield Beach on April 6, 2019, from 12:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m., providing for an effective date.
City manager?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Gans. Just quickly, this is for an Italian festival on the beach. This is not a budgeted item. However, Department of Parks and Recreation did process it. We see no real issue with the event, and it would be a policy decision by the city commission to fund it. I believe the total cost is under $7,000, which includes lost revenue for the parking spaces, and then some soft costs as well. Do know that the Rotary and Wyndham, who is the event venue, are both here to speak on this. So, again, I do have Parks and Recreation staff here, but it is their application, if you'd like to hear from them.
That would be great.
Good evening, Claude Dubois, 4263 Northwest 29 Way, representing the Rotary Club of Deerfield Beach. Mayor Gans, Vice Mayor Battle, and commissioners, forgive my non-Floridian accent to start with. This event is to take place on April 6, you know, from, from 12:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. It's a community event that we would like to organize, you know, involving the local businesses, to drive, you know, families just right by 2096 Northeast Second Street. We're expecting about 2,000 people, with which are, you know, to various organizations to support us, including the Italian consulate. And, you know, there will be live entertainment during the day, various activities, you know, additional restaurants, and so on. About 15 food vendors and 15, you know, non-food vendors would also like, you know, to, to participate, basically.
Okay, thank you. Anyone from the public here to comment on this item?
Hello, I'm Kirsten Charleston. I'm here as president-elect of the Rotary Club in Deerfield Beach. And I just want to make a comment, as all the proceeds that we get from the event will go right back into Deerfield Beach in the form of scholarships for the kids. It's what we do.
Excellent. Thank you. And Mr. Dubois, your accent is perfect for this time of year in Florida, by the way.
(laughing) 349 Northeast 19th Avenue. I am definitely in favor of this, and I thank them so much for bringing this forward, and look forward to much success on April 6.
Okay. Anyone else?
Hi, it's me again, Joseph Wardley, 313 Southeast 15th Terrace. I am a past president of the Rotary, and I'm a current member of the Rotary. We do a lot of things for the Deerfield Beach. We work with the sheriff in terms of getting the backpacks together for the, you know, for the school year. I personally procure the toothbrushes, floss, and toothpaste for that, for those backpacks. We do a lot of things with the scholarships, and also for the underprivileged kids for Christmas parties. All of our money comes from our fundraisers, and this would be one of our fundraisers to help pay for the things we do for the city of Deerfield Beach.
Michael Hudek, 34, Southeast 9th Avenue. I'm also a member of Rotary. For the last four years, my company has participated with Rotary in the backpack giveaway. It's gave away, last year, we gave away 1,500 backpacks to needy children. We've also given a $18,000 scholarship to an FAU student, and over a $20,000, 1,000, over 21,000 scholarships to, to local Deerfield Beach students who are going off to college. All of those funds come from the different fundraisers that the Rotary does provide, and it does all go back to our city, and I think this would be a wonderful event. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public?
Michael Lubin, 16, Little Harbor Way. I also am a Rotarian, and this is going to be a wonderful event, great for the city, great for our residents in Deerfield Beach. As we, has been stated, all the money that we do earn goes right back to the city and our community. Thank you so much.
Okay. Anyone else from the public? Not seeing anybody come forward. I'm going to close it to the public, then. Mr. Parnas?
Motion to approve.
Commissioner Drosky?
Can I have Peter Sellers, I mean, Mr. Dubois, come back to the microphone, please?[1106.58][1106.58](laughing) Sorry about that.
No, it's okay.
Too, too easy.
I'm used to it.
What are, what are your plans for marketing this event? How are you going to get the word out? This is your, obviously, your, your first annual event. How are you going to market and get the word out?
Well, we have the, the support of the Deerfield Beach Magazine, the Observer Newspaper. We've also been talking to 105.9 in terms of radio show, to support us. We've been working with them in the past. And then, you know, you have, you know, social media and, and so on, you know, to, to do so. Our hope, you know, is to get 2,000 people there. You know, I also represent the Wyndham. We have, we, we have, you know, on a day-to-day basis, between, you know, 300 to 700 people staying with us on property. So, only that, you know, should give us the, the support, you know, that we hope, you know, to make this event successful. And when I look at the last event for President's Weekend, which was marvelous, you know, that really helped us, you know, as a business in terms of the restaurants to, to drive, you know, additional food traffic. So, anything we can do to support the Rotary, obviously, would be, you know, welcome. And the city, you know, website would be a great addition in terms of marketing, you know, to the local community.
You, you mentioned President's Day a second ago, and I think that's a great segue, because we had a, an absolutely fantastic Pioneer Days down at the beach this weekend.
Yes.
And, and I think whatever dollars went into that, we're going to get back exponentially, hand over fist, the, the great publicity we got out of this event, and the people that are talking about Deerfield Beach. So, for a soft cost of 5,500 plus 918 in lost parking revenue, for a total of 6,418, I think that's pretty cheap in the marketing, and the advertisement, and the name recognition that Deerfield Beach is going to get out of this event. So, I'm, I'm in support of your event.
Thank you.
Is that a second?
It is.
Okay, so, we have a motion in a second. I will say this, kudos to Rotary, because they have been through the wringer to put this event on. So, thank you very much for your hard work on it, and all you do for us here in the city of Deerfield Beach, year round, not just this year, but for many years. So, this hasn't been an easy thing for you to put together. It's been your blood, sweat, and tears. It's greatly appreciated. And I'm one of the ones that put you through the wringer, and I'm glad I did. But, I think you guys are going to have an outstanding event. We're very proud to support it. I am pleased.
Thank you.
Rule call, please.
Commissioner Drosky?
Yes.
Commissioner Parnas?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Battle?
Yes.
Mayor Gans?
Yes.
Okay. Next item is item number 12 on the agenda, resolution of the city commission of the city of Deerfield Beach, Florida approving a special event application submitted by the Rotary Club to sell alcoholic beverages as special event. Best buddies, boss of the toss, taking place at Pioneer Park in Deerfield Beach on May 16, 2019, from 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m.
City manager?
Thank you, Mayor Gans. Again, with this, there is not any fiscal impact on the city. Fairly low-key event. The only, the only reason why this is even coming to the city commission is policy regarding selling alcohol on a public property. So, again, we have Ms. Fink, who is the event sponsor applicant. She can answer any questions from that perspective, but this is a straightforward, very easy special event application, with no issues from the staff's perspective. Thank you.
Anyone from the public here to comment on item number 12? Not seeing anybody come forward, I'm going to close it to the public. Can we have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion, and I'd like to disclose, I'm a Rotarian, past president too, but I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. We have rule call, please.
Commissioner Drosky?
Yes.
Commissioner Parnas?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Battle?
Yes.
Mayor Gans?
Yes.
Item number 13 is a funding request item, not a resolution or a resolution.
City manager?
Yes, I have Ms. Plastipicard available to do a brief summary of the funding requests by the city commission for projects that will be going to city commission. These have been discussed in the past, but we just wanted to bring it forward, since the legislative session begins shortly.
Perfect.
Good evening, Mayor Vice, Mayor City Commission. I'm Vicki Plastipicard, Community
Development Director. As Mr. Hanson mentioned, the city submitted five projects through the 2019-2020 Legislative Local Funding Initiative, also known as the Florida Appropriations Request. There are five projects, Alzheimer's Daycare Center. As you know, each year, we do have to fight for funding, as funding is usually at risk from the state. In addition to that, Bran Hilder, Richardson Knowles Memorial Park and Historical Cemetery. As we've received funding in the past, we asked for an additional 200,000. The project is under construction, and the additional funds would be for some public art elements. The third project we're looking to, and we're happy that you approved it today, was funding for the Higher DFB Workforce Development Initiative. We would apply to the state for that. In addition to that, would be two lots at the, for the beach acquisition. There are always multiple discussions about the lots on the beach, so there will be two lots we would purchase, we require funding for. The third, just south of the Past William Ford Senior Linear Trails Park, there are five vacant lots that were up for sale. So, we're looking to purchase those lots again. So, we'll submit. Each of these has to be sponsored by both a member of the House and a member of the Senate, and we've reached out to them, working with lobbyists, the Rubin Turnbull and Associates Group. And as long, as soon as everything's filed, we'll have the bill numbers for you, as well as when these items will go before the various committees and subcommittees.
This is just an update on the press, right?
Yes.
Okay. That's it. Thank you.
Comments by administration, legal?
Anthony, do you have any updates?
I do not.
Okay.
No updates today.
Thank you. Mayor Gans, just quickly, I do have Ms. Allison Teslia. She's a budget manager for the city of Deerfield Beach, and she'll be doing the first quarter budget summary. And we'll be able to answer any questions that the city commission may have at the end. Thank you.
Thank you.
Perfect. Good evening. Tonight, I'm going to go over the first quarter budget summary. You received the full report a couple weeks ago in your weekly packet.
Thank you.
First, we'll be talking about the general fund revenues. The typical range that we would expect to see at the end of the first quarter is anywhere between 15% to 30% of revenues or expenditures to date. Some of the key factors here, the Avalorum taxes, the majority of them are received between October and December, because most people pay at that time, because they get a discount. The intergovernmental revenues are usually distributed the following month, when they're earned from the state, which is why, as of December 31st, we had only received two payments. The miscellaneous revenues include the fire protection fees, which are also included with the annual tax bill, which is why it's so high. The capital lease agreements, nothing has happened to date, because we typically go into those agreements in June or July, because that's when all of the equipment and vehicles have been purchased for the year. And the appropriations and cash carryover are just the projected reserves per the approved budget, and you wouldn't see anything posted to those accounts until towards the end of the fiscal year. Other than that, all the other general fund revenue categories are within the appropriate range. Here's the general fund expenditures. In the administrative services, because we don't have much room, that's pretty much, you know, the city manager's office, human resources, financial services, budget, the ones that aren't listed here. Okay. On here, some of the key factors, the information technology department was a little below what we'd like to see as of the end of the quarter, but that was because they were in the process of filling open positions. The public safety, I know it was brought up earlier. As of 12/31, four payments were made. We typically make 12 equal installments through the year, but because it's typically due the first, and it was a holiday, we paid in December. So, as of 12/31, four payments were made. And for debt service, no major debt service payments were due during the quarter, which is why it's lower than what we had budgeted. The other general fund departmental expenditures are all within the appropriate range.
Can I stop you to ask a question?
Sure.
Just to specifically address the issue with the Broward Sheriff's Office. The point that was made earlier tonight, can you go a little more in-depth on that, and what they were trying to say, and what the reality is?
We take the contract amount for the year, and we split it into 12 equal payments. I'm not really sure what they were talking about, about another expenditure, because there wasn't one. Me and Hugh looked it up earlier.
Okay.
But, we can look into it further.
Okay. Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Okay. So, for the other funds, again, we look at the 25% range. Go to the next slide, because this really shows the picture. Senior Services is within the range. The CDVG grant funding is typically received from the federal government in June or July, which is why it's low. The Road and Bridge Fund is, money is received also from the state for local gas taxes, and as of 12/31, we had only received two months. The Water and Sewer Renewal Fund, the majority of the projects are being funded from the utility reserves, which is why it's lower. And all the other fund revenues are within the appropriate range as of the end of 12/31. Okay. For other fund expenditures... For other fund expenditures, this is the detail of the expenditures, but this is the picture. The CDBG is really low as of 12/31 because we didn't receive the executed grant agreement from the federal government until towards the end of the quarter, so we weren't able to actually do anything yet at that point. The Water and Sewer Renewal Fund, the major projects are, as of 12/31, were under design and/or permitting phases. For the Stormwater Fund, the major projects were not commenced until the second quarter of the fiscal year. That was done intentionally to try to reduce any type of major construction in our neighborhoods during the holidays. Other than that, all the other fund expenditures appear to be within, you know, an appropriate Upcoming projects from the Department of Budget and Performance, we are almost done with our Open Gov Transparency Portal project, so that's expected to be completed by mid-March, and we're also going to be providing updates on the departmental performance measures. And the quarterly budget summary and the monthly financial reports are on the city's website, and this is the link.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Any questions? No? Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mayor Gans, that's all I have to report tonight. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Item number 14?
Item number 14 is resolution of the City Commission of the City of Deerfield Beach, Florida changing the designation of certain right-of-way at Northwest Third Street between Northwest Third Ave and Northwest Fourth Ave to a dual designation in honor of Specialist Daniel Lawson, a U.S. Armed Forces veteran killed in combat, providing for an effective date.
Anyone from the public here to comment on this item?
Commission comments first. All right. All right.
My apologies.
That's right.
Anyone from the public? I'm going to close it to the public. Commissioner?
I think originally, we were way too vague about who can participate, but I think right now, this new revision is way too far, saying that you have to be a homesteaded resident.
We're on the item.
Oh, wait, am I on the wrong one?
Sergeant Lawson.
Oh, Lawson? Oh, God bless, I want to do that one. I'm reading the wrong one.
Next one.
I'm making a motion to pass that one.
Second.
Thank you for being so proactive, yes. We have a motion and a second. We have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Drowski.
Yes.
Commissioner Parnas.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Battle.
Yes.
Mayor Gans.
Yes, and this is long overdue. I thank you for doing this.
Okay, the next item is item, item 15, ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Deerfield Beach, Florida amending City Code Section 66-78 requirements for parking stickers to modify the eligibility requirements for the purchase of city parking stickers, providing for codification, separability, conflicts, and an effective date. My office prepared this ordinance. At the January 15th meeting, there was a resident, a gentleman that came up to the podium and spoke about how the city was looking at residency for the purposes of purchasing or being eligible to purchase the city parking stickers. There was a discussion about using the state condition similar to like being a homesteaded property owner, and there was some discussion on that and some future discussion needed. Essentially, what you have in front of you is a draft. It is very restrictive, admittedly, and it does provide essentially require a homesteaded, proof of a homesteaded property in the city, which means you would have to be owner of the property. Having heard your comment, Commissioner Miller, I could tell you, if we were moving forward on second reading with this as written, I'd have some concerns and probably talk to you all about this, so I do encourage you to discuss it, you know, further. But I wanted to put something on there. I was, we were directed to put together an ordinance, so we did exactly what was stated in the public comment portion. So, thank you.
Thank you. Let's open it to the public, and then we'll have a commission. Anyone from the public here to comment on this item?
Good evening. David Savinsky, 20 Westbury A, Deerfield Beach. Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Commissioners, particularly Mayor Gans for sponsoring this phase. I am that person that you're referring to, and I've reviewed the particulars that you've listed, which would be having to have a Florida plate, basically a Florida registration on your vehicle. And the second component was to be able to show either the original or the facsimile of your homestead statement from the tax, from the county tax. Those were two of, I believe, five or six variables that the state considers to be in compliance to be considered a resident of the state of Florida. Those two particular ones are actually, sound rather restrictive, but the truth of the matter is, they're very easy from an administrative standpoint. There's very little that would have to be done in terms of the city as far as determining that. Here's the paper. Yep, the county agrees. People would be very hesitant to risk a $5,000 fine or a year in jail to try and work around or game the system. If you just had the Florida plate, which I think is appropriate, I had to pay my $400, I have to pay my tag fee every year. The Florida plate could be easily gamed if that were the only issue by simply coming down, buying a $500 junker car and have that be your beach car, get a Florida plate, go down there. The other advantage, of course, with the plates, though, is that it's very easy in terms of enforcement. I've spoken with parking enforcement, and they've said, yeah, what can I do? People game it all the time. If they're driving along and there's a Florida plate and a sticker-only space, you know, there's some, it's fine. If it's not a Florida plate, time to write a ticket. I certainly think there are several different options that could be done. I think last time, I suggested the possibility of a two-tiered system, that you would still have an annual parking permit that would give people, you know, the advantage of not having to have change or go through the app or all that sort of thing to be able to park down there. They're coming down for their holiday, their temporary stay, and it would make it easy for them, but residents, you know, constituent residents would be able to utilize those specific spaces. May I have one more minute? Those specific spaces that do stay resident, parking stickers. So I guess it's something that could be worked on, but I'd certainly like to see it move forward and see what could come up, because I know there are a lot of people who feel kind of entitled to having things both ways. It's not right. You're either a resident here, or you're a resident in wherever, wherever it's cold.
Dan Hurst, 330 Southeast 19th Avenue. I'm glad that the city attorney, Soroka, kind of explained how he came up with this draconian, most crazy definition and that it can be amended. I have no problem with the first of the two, the vehicle registration, but this item number two, you could just kind of retitle it, "Let's Screw Every Single Renter in Deerfield Beach." I think if you would just, number two, if you want to have a second thing, just by having a driver's license with a Deerfield Beach address, seems to me you would really accomplish everything that you were trying to accomplish without undue hardship to every single person in the city who rents and does not own. So I, hopefully, this number two was just written to, as an example of the worst possible thing we could do, and it will not be the final version. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public here to comment?
William Broadway, 1419 Second Street, Southeast in the Cove. I do completely agree with the requirement, number one, the vehicle registration. Be easy to check, see a vehicle, does not have a Florida plate, automatically run the plate, write the ticket. You said most of the revenue comes from the pay-by-plate or pay-by-parking anyway. There are lots of people who do live in Deerfield Beach that rent or lease. They've lived in the same location many years. They do vote here as well. Yes, homeowners do pay more in taxes, but, say you've got a duplex in the Cove with four tenants, they pay $3,000 a month, $36,000 a year in rent. The landlord does use a portion of that to pay funds. Those funds do pay annual taxes, so even the renters are paying taxes as well and don't get the homestead exemption. You can get Florida resident discounts from such places, Disney, Bus Gardens, Pro Teams, and they don't require homestead tax exemptions to get those. Preventing rental tenants, leasing tenants, people that are considering moving here that are renting at the time, to be banned from getting a pass is not right when the beach is our number-one asset, and I think everyone should have a right to go to the beach, especially if they're here 365 days a year, and they do pay taxes indirectly through the landlord.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else in the public?
Katie Freitag, 418 Southeast Second Street. In reviewing the background information, I do agree that, yes, there are, you should be able to provide both a Florida license as well as a Florida plate. I do think that you should be able to provide either renting bills that you, that either landlord lease or homestead exemption, something along those lines, but at the same time, there are people from Canada, people from other countries that live here six, seven, eight, nine months out of the year, some up to, I believe, the licenses, I think it's 11 months you can, 11 months you have to go back to Canada for one month. But those people are here, and they are paying taxes. They're owning condos, they're paying taxes through different ways. They should also be allowed to get licensed, they should also be allowed to get a beach permit, maybe at a different rate than the regular citizens, but they should be able to get one if they're paying, if they're here long enough. And I don't know how we can determine that, but, you know, Canadians are good people too, so that's somebody that we need to embrace, Canadians and New Yorkers that are down here, they are snowbirds. We're here, they're here six months, eight months sometimes. We need to embrace their money, we need to take their money, and if we can take their money through a parking pass or through restaurants, we're all for it.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public here to comment on this item? Not seeing anybody come forward, and we'll close it to the public. Commissioner Parnas?
Well, we could go overboard and ask for voter registration and other things, but it reaches a point of being ridiculous after a while. I think the restrictions that were in the backup material are quite sufficient, and I don't think full-time renters should be excluded. There has to be a way to include them. If they're residents and live here all year round, the fact that they don't own shouldn't be penalizing these people. Not everybody can afford to own, but they're still residents, they still pay taxes, and they live here, so we have to include everybody that lives here.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Drowski?
Look, whatever we decide, we're not going to make everybody happy, there's going to be some folks that are carved out, that are going to come with pitchforks down to City Hall. So it's funny, the day after this agenda item came out with this backup, I was driving, and in front of me was a car from Quebec with like three or four Deerfield Beach parking stickers on the back of it, and there's got to be a way to regulate this without going, you know, too overboard. I mean, I think the reason that car with the Quebec plates had all those stickers on it is because the way that it currently reads is it doesn't have the state of Florida vehicle registration, you just have to have a vehicle registration. Well, that would include the, you know, the Canadian address, so if we were to limit it to, you know, a state of Florida vehicle registration and a state of Florida driver's license with a Deerfield Beach address, that may be closer to what we're trying to achieve, though I don't know how hard it is for other folks to get. I mean, you can get the vehicle registration, that's not a problem, but can you get a second or duplicate license, you know, with the Deerfield Beach address on it and cheat the system? So, but limiting it to, you know, homestead property owners may be a little too onerous. It does exclude the renters and other folks that we have in the city who are legitimate residents that just don't happen to own property. So I'm looking for some kind of, you know, compromise on number one. I like number one a lot, actually, is the requirement. If you want to throw in the driver's license aspect into number one, and then, you know, if you wanted a backup, say, number three, you know, so that they, so not to cheat the system, so that there is a secondary proof of form, either a voter registration or utility bill to support the driver's license and the registration, that may be something that we could cobble together and try and achieve the objective without offending the non-property homeowners here in the city.
Okay. Commissioner Miller?
Yeah, so I think for certain, I think I hear agreement that we don't want to discriminate against full-time residents that are renters, so we want to, I think we all want to strike that. But I think maybe I lost what we were trying to do because, you know, I just saw in the reporter or something in Century Village that you were mayor, I think you said, hey, we've reduced the sticker fee. I got the impression that you were saying, you know, for almost everybody that lived in Century Village, and my estimate is maybe 25% of the people are from Canada. Do we, do you want to not allow the Canadians to get these stickers? I don't know if that was our original intention or not, but it's a significant part of the population, they own real estate here, and they stay X amount of months. So do we want to say they can't because they don't live here 12 months? So I didn't know that we want to discriminate against people that own real estate here. It might not be their primary residence, but they own, they're diffreal residents for half the year or so many months, so maybe I'm missing the real intention. I may have been too loose before, but I don't want to eliminate renters, and I'm not sure I want to eliminate people that own real estate in Deerfield, pay taxes in Deerfield, and they just don't live here full-time. So, I mean, I'm thinking about the apartments in Century Village in particular, a lot are Canadians, so do we want to say they can't because they're not a full-time resident? I'm just asking my fellow commissioners in the sunlight, is that our intention?
Can we ask what you've done?
Well, I'd like to hear from my fellow commissioners, do we want to restrict people if they're not full-time residents?
Okay. Commissioner Parnas and then Commissioner Drowski?
I don't think we should discriminate. A resident is a resident. How we determine who that resident says a lot about who we are as a city. About 40% of the residents in Century Village are now Canadian. 60%, 60% are not. But among that 60%, we do have snowbirds.
Okay.
So we have to devise a system to be inclusive of our intent of residents. We have to define what is a resident, and then devise a system to fit people into it. I'm going to suggest we table this until we come up with a system. Leave it alone until we come up with a system that includes who we want and excludes who we don't want.
I think that has merit. I would support it if there was a motion, because I don't think we've thought this all the way through, even based on our discussions.
We've got Commissioner Drowski's light on, I'm going to chime in as well, so. Go to Commissioner Drowski.
Yeah, I thought that's what we're doing tonight, is crafting the policy, you know, there's no need to table this. I mean, we're discussing and debating it now to go forward to second reading. My understanding was that we want to give full-time residents a benefit for living in the city of Deerfield Beach, and that's the ability to get the parking sticker. If you're not a full-time resident, then you're not entitled to that benefit, because we have 2,000 stickers roughly that are issued per year, and we don't have 2,000 spaces at the beach to accommodate that, so there's clearly more stickers than there are spaces. So the comment that came, you know, from the public that, you know, the mayor brought forward tonight, I think deserves debate, and I think we do need to tighten up how the parking stickers are issued, and how we cobble that together is what we're doing tonight. So I respectfully suggest that. I thought we were going under a full-time basis as a prerequisite to getting the parking sticker. Now, what, how do you determine who's a full-time resident? One way, yes, is the homestead registration, but that may be too inclusive. So to incorporate more full-time residents in the city, you can have the vehicle registration with the driver's license, but then again, that may not be foolproof, and that's where I was seeking comment from my colleagues. I was seeking comment from my colleagues here. Do you want a second layer of documentation which would weed out further people that are trying to get around the system and just get a sticker who's saying they're full-time residents when they're really, when they're really not? And that's would be adding, you know, a voter registration requirement, the water bill requirement, et cetera. If you combine all those factors together, I think you'll probably get to what we're trying to achieve.
You know, this is all about supply and demand. That's what it comes down to. It's not about leaving somebody out in the cold or anything like that. We have about 40 spaces that are residential parking spaces. That's it. That's not a lot for a city with over 75,000 people in it. And, yeah, I agree that the homestead requirement on here is strong. I mean, we don't make it mandatory for people to run for office to have a homestead exemption in the city of Deerfield Beach. I don't know how we can make it stricter on beach parking stickers. So, but, but I will say this, the, this is not about attacking a certain segment of the community. I think that's wrong, and it's somewhat become that. We're all referencing Canadians. This isn't about Canadians, this isn't about New Yorkers, anybody from Massachusetts, Georgia, Alabama, wherever you're coming from. This isn't about that. It's about simply supply and demand. And I'm really disgusted by some people that have taken it to that extent. I read somewhere online, someone pointed it out to me, that a local hotel owner said, if the Canucks don't like it, they can kiss my blank. That's not exactly the kind of warm welcome that I want from the city of Deerfield Beach, and that business person should be ashamed of themselves. That's not what we're looking to do here, but it is about supply and demand. The only way we could do this fairly is to do a two-tier approach, and one of the ways we can do it is to take those 40 spaces. Forty of them are available to full-time residents, you have your own sticker, separate sticker. You're allowed to come here, and all you need to do is to have a current state of Florida vehicle registration with the name of the applicant and indicating a city of Deerfield Beach address, okay? We can add in the driver's license if you'd like, but that would qualify you as a full-time Deerfield Beach resident. Every single one of those spaces are available to you based on your parking sticker. If you don't fit that, but you fit our old requirements, then half the, half those designated spaces will be available for part-time residents. Does that make sense?
Actually, residents, I like, I like two tiers.
Because it's not about the dollars at this point. It's $75 for a ticket. You're going to pay, you're going to say it's $150. If, if you're from out of the country and you're down here for six months, whatever it is going to be, you're going to pay that, and we're not going to net anything, because all it means is we're getting a little bit more extra money and we don't have enough spaces for you. The reason Fort Lauderdale does so cheap with their $25 ticket fees is because they have so few spaces. You know how big Fort Lauderdale is? You know what it's like? They'd be ripping people off incredibly if they went higher than 25 bucks a space to go ahead and say, hey, you've got your beach parking access right there at the southernmost point in the beach, that's where we have a few spaces for you. It would be a complete ripoff. Look, we've only got 40 spaces. We keep it for the full-time residents, they're allowed to park in all 40 of those spaces. The rest, we give a different tiered system. They have the different requirement, they get a different colored sticker, and only certain spaces are allowed to park in. That's the only way I can see to split it up and do a two-tiered system that's somewhat fair. Otherwise, someone's going to get left out, and I would say the cold, but that's not why they're down here, so. I don't know what you guys think about that.
Makes sense to me.
Okay, so, so we all agree to get rid of the homestead exemption clause?
Yes.
Okay. So we're going to get rid of that. How do we feel about for regular full-time residents, a state of Florida vehicle registration, the name of the applicant, indicating a city of Deerfield Beach address? Any other requirement?
Deerfield license, deerfield driver's license.
And it has to have driver's license?
Yeah.
Okay. Does that work for everyone? Yes, the Florida driver's license, Deerfield, with a Deerfield address, and a registration for your vehicle in the city of Deerfield Beach. That qualifies you for a full-time, all right? Do we want to try this second tier?
I do.
How many more spaces are there?
There, there's only 40 spaces.
Altogether?
Yes, 39, 40, approximately.
Well, let me ask, let me ask.
See, Andrew, you want to chime in on that?
Well, I got to ask a question here. Let me just ask that. If there's only 40 spaces that we're giving it to full-time residents, we're selling tickets to something that's non-existent?
It's like an airplane. You sell more tickets because not everybody shows up.
No.
I, I think I can answer your question. So, so number one, there's 40 designated spots. That means if you're, you're coming to the beach and you're going to the main beach lot, the fire station lot, or the southeast 9th Street lot, which is just north of Embassy Suites, not only do you have those designated spots that you can park in, but you can also park at any of the metered spaces. I believe what Mayor Gans is suggesting is those designated spots would be the tier one, or the first tier stickers.
Full-time resident.
Yeah, full-time resident, if I'm correct. And the other residents or that are not full-time would be able to park in, in the non-designated spots within those three lots. Is that correct from the way I understand?
Essentially, what it is, whatever the 40 spots are, determine what magic number you want. I say you split it in half. The 40 is for the first-tier resident, which is a full-time resident, they can park in any, any of those 40 spots. The other 20 are for full-time residents and the part-time residents who use those. It only gives them 20 spots a day, and it's not a lot, but we don't have a lot to give. So that's just my suggestion.
Yeah, and the criteria to be a, a non-full-time is they own real estate here?
Yeah, they would have to. Here's what we want to avoid. I don't think it's right that we have somebody coming down here that has an RV, that's renting an RV at a location, that is coming in and getting a full-time Deerfield Beach resident parking. I don't know if that's the route we want to be, situation we want to be in. I'm not positive that that's happening, but I want to make sure that doesn't happen.
Phil, I got, I got a question that I don't understand. If all 40 show up and they're parked in the lot.
That's happening now, Bernie.
I know. So where do the other 20 spots come from?
They go home and they call you and they're complaining because they don't have a spot to park, and they can't get a hold of you, they call me. So that's what's happening.
It's first come, first served, it always has been.
It's first come, first served. We've got 40 spots. It's the way it is, the way it's always been, all right? So it, it's, that, that's what happens, and it happens every day. It's 365 days a year.
I agree. Okay, so why bother with a second tier then if there's no spots for them?
Well, because not everybody goes all the time, every day, they're, they're available.
Look, if you want a second tier, you can come up with a different way to go about it, come up with it. That's the best I can do with my limited mental capacity up here tonight. So it's pushing 11 o'clock, you guys decide what you want to do, but I think if you want a second tier, which I understand that there's, I mean, there's good reason to do it, but...
Okay, I'll, I'll.
And here's part of the reason why we don't expand and give more of those spaces away, because of the revenue that's there, we need a certain amount of revenue to be able to pay for the whole parking situation on that. So adding more spaces does not help us.
Okay, I'll make a motion.
Wait, wait, we're not, we're not done yet. Let me flush it out.
Okay.
All right. I like the second tier. So that means of the 40, only 20 of those available spots are going to be available for second-tier people, and they'll be distributed among the three spaces.
I don't like calling them second tier, but let's just, it's got a negative connotation, you know what I mean?
The non-full-time residents.
Yes, there you go.
But they're residents.
Right.
And, all right, so I got that, but what will be our criteria to call them residents at this point? Would it have to be sure that they have, because we don't want part-time renters, or do we? Or is it still just people that own real estate in Deerfield? Is that going to be, what's the qualification of, of the non-full-time? Is it going to be owners?
What you guys like to do.
Or renters, part-time, or how is that going to work?
Well, i-if we stick to our current cri, our current standard, then that...
It could be owners or renters.
Of course. No, this isn't how owners...
And how do we show, electric bill? How does it?
Well, it's the same way we always have, Joe. It's the same way we always have, that they qualify now.
But they wouldn't have to necessarily change a license plate if they're part-time, and they wouldn't have a Florida driver's license.
For, for non-full-time residents, we keep it the same criteria that exists today. Does that make sense?
So with the driver's license and the registration?
You're, you're trying to add in the new stuff.
Oh, you mean, no, like, what it is today, what it is today.
The way it exists today.
Okay, I'll go with that.
Okay.
I'll go with that.
All right.
You don't make motions, I'll make that motion. We have a two-tiered system.
I'm confused with whatever motion's going on, it's maybe some...
Can we, can we not have that? Thank you.
We have a two-tiered system that any qualified full-time resident, whether they be, they renter or owner, they can, they prove.
If I may.
Yeah.
If I may.
You, you say it, and I'll be the one to do it.
And hell, I'm not, I'm the one to keep up, and I can't, I'm not sure I can figure it out right now, but I'll tell you exactly what it is. We change for full-time residents, all 40 spaces, whatever the amount of spaces we have, are available for all full-time residents that qualify using the new system, which is vehicle registration in the city of Deerfield Beach and a Deerfield Beach driver's license. Okay? Is that clear? All right. The second part of it is a second-tier system, or, or a, a non-full-time Deerfield Beach resident, resident. They're allowed to use 20 of those spaces, and they, in order to get that parking sticker, all they have to do is meet the same criteria that exists today. Okay?
That's my motion.
Second.
Look, this is going to come back for a second reading. I'm sure it'll be ripped apart and torn apart then, and maybe even tabled to, for further discussion, but I think this is at least a direction we should explore and see if somebody comes back with a better idea. So we have a motion?
We do in a second.
We have a motion in a second, we have a roll call?
Commissioner Drosky?
Yes.
Commissioner Parnas?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Battle?
Yes.
Mayor Gans?
Yes.
Discussion item, Commissioner Drosky's the sponsor. Discussion and potential action concerning F.D.O.T.
Commissioner Drosky?
Oh, my favorite subject, 10th Street. So we're getting down to the mission-critical stage with F.D.O.T. I'm having meetings with them, I'm sure some of, the others of you are having meetings with, with them as well, and they are not abiding by the code recommendations.
Talking to Mike.
Their, F.D.O.T.'s not abiding by the code recommendations. We're 18 recommendations that the code committee put together and recommended for the Southwest 10th Street project to build consensus, and in my opinion, that is not happening. And one perfect example was the code recommendation for no flyovers. There is a flyover, a bridge, whatever you want to call it, it's semantics to me, right smack in front of the Waterways Community, which will also affect Independence Bay. This is not what we signed up for. They're getting closer to a preferred recommendation, although I understand that may be delayed by a month or two, but they're getting closer, and it seems like our comments are falling on, on, on deaf ears. And it's a little frustrating when you're a team of one, because I would love to hear, you know, the comments of the mayor. I would love to hear the comments from, from Commissioner Parnas. It affects all three of our districts and our, or both our districts, rather, and, and our constituents, and we can't talk to each other because of the, the sunshine. So the reason I put this, well, that's what I, I put this on tonight, is that we, you know, schedule some type of, you know, through the assistance with the city attorney, some type of, you know, workshop, some type of public meeting where we can get together and we can discuss 10th Street, and we can come up with a plan to fight this. So it's just not me in a room talking to them, and then they talk to the mayor, and they hear something else or something similar, and they talk to Commissioner Parnas, and then it's something different, because they're dividing us on purpose, I think, to, to get that opinion, so we don't have the consensus to fight them. I think we need to unite, we need to be unified on our position, and we can't do that if we are not allowed to talk to one another. And I think we need to come up a way, with a way, so that we can talk to one another and not violate sunshine.
I have a question on that for the attorney.
Commissioner Parnas?
Anthony?
Yes, yes, Commissioner.
What on the 10th Street project that's a state thing would we be violating talking to each other when the commission's not going to vote on it?
Well, so, under the sunshine law, it's any actions that may be foreseeable to come before you for, before a vote. I don't want to speculate on the number of different things that you could get into a discussion about that may ultimately come to a vote. I could think of a couple of things on my head, and we could talk about it separately, but, yeah.
Well, then I'm going to suggest the following, that we arrange a meeting with all the commissioners and invite Commissioner Mark Bogan, who's volunteered his services as an attorney, to sue on our behalf to stop the project.
Yeah, I'd probably recommend against, you know, that at least initially, Commissioner, at least portion of what you said, not the meeting. I think the meeting's a good idea, but in terms of the, the latter comment, we may want to discuss first, discuss that issue first. I'd like to discuss that issue privately with you first, if that's okay with you.
Of course it is.
Thank you.
If, if we have legal options to discuss, can we, and I'm not saying this is what we should do, but if we want to at least start those proceedings, so we can discuss what our options are from a legal standpoint with a potential lawsuit, but will we need to do that? And I'm not talking about spending a ton of money right now to get, go down that path. I just want to get us together to figure out what our options are to be able to, to determine if that's a path we want to go.
Okay.
Can we call an executive session? We're allowed to talk about that, or do we have to declare that we're going to file?
Yeah, so I, I think that's sort of the issue with the executive session, it really only comes into play when there's actual or threatened litigation. And so I think at this point, you know, I'm recommending that, at least a workshop initially to, to discuss it, and then we can potentially discuss more in depth if there's a certain direction that the commission wants to head, maybe, because I think I'm hearing that you guys want to speak to each other about it, you want to discuss your options, and haven't necessarily landed on one option over another. So a workshop or a meeting regarding this specific topic may be a good place to start to assess those options, and depending on which way you go, it could open up other avenues. But I, I don't know that I'm, am I answering your question? Is that...
It does.
Okay.
So it wouldn't be an executive session, it'd be a workshop meeting?
A workshop or a meeting, yeah, executive session is usually the characterization we give when we're in litigation or somebody's actually made, threatened actual litigation.
Well, I, I know we have businesses within the city of Deerfield Beach that are concerned, considering legal action regarding this, and I don't know if any of you are aware of that, but, and some of these have come forward and, and they've come to us through work with the EDC that have, have businesses that have their concerns, that they've taken to the EDC, that have come to us, that are, are talking about legal action, so. It's, we do need to spend some quality time talking about it.
Well, reset a meeting? I'll come.
Seems like there's consensus for, to set a meeting?
Yes, set a meeting.
Or workshop, whatever we call it. Okay. A workshop.
Okay. Open it to the public to talk about this one? Claire Riccardi? This was just a discussion, this was not a, since, well, yes, we'll open it to the public if you'd like to.
Mayor Gans, Vice Mayor Battle, and all other commissioners.
I'm sorry, I just need your name and address for the record.
Oh, I didn't know if I do it the first around. I, I don't get up here that often, I'm sorry. Claire Vivie Riccardi, 1121 Southwest Military Trail, Deerfield Beach, Florida. To all of you, good evening and thank you for letting me speak. On and about the first and second, this is regarding this particular number 16. I'm very much against it. On and about the first or second meeting at Hillsborough Center, I directly brought to the attention of the builder attorney or the representative of the company that their PowerPoint stated they proved and had processed that the time factor for the stat response for our BSO and fire rescue was going to be effective, and their emergency was at our advantage. In listening to that, I immediately arose and signed to ask the question, that is this true to that representative? And he went, oh, no, we did not. May we have that in the future?" I requested. Now again, we're still here, we do not have this. This evening, if you recall and before you, we had the honor of the BSO and fire rescue getting this special award, the ISO Class One. Why? Again, because of who we had, the chief, the captain. And again, for Chief Matt Pelletier and his squads, because the response time is tremendous. I don't know if any of you, God forbid, knock a wood, I hope you never have to use them, but I have lived in the city for over twenty-some-odd years and have had to, very sadly, had to call them many times for family members, a brother that I lost and my husband, rest his soul, and also a nephew. The response time was tremendous. His life was saved many times because of his conditions. I feel that you should take that under consideration, number one. Number two is our lives, I believe, are much more important than this bridge or this little undertone or whatever they wanna call it. If you look and research, which I brought again to the attention of that representative, I asked him right out, aren't you the same company? The representative went to the city of Boca Raton. And he said, "Yes." They absolutely refused to do the same project because they're a city who took their time and I think thought of their particular residents. As a resident for many years, if you look at the response time that we've had with this tremendous team of our BSO and our fire rescue, for God forbid, of all our lives and all our family and all our residents, it's been tremendous. If you look at the stats, that's what I've asked for. No one has given that to us. And if you do, I wanna see how you could take your vehicle and go around a corner and be less time going in double. May I have an extra moment? I'd appreciate it. So if you take your vehicles and you go from each fire station and our neighboring fire stations and God forbid, knock a wood, and you're not feeling well? Well, I know, I was in two, also two very serious car accidents and thank God I'm still living. I had an eighteen-wheeler run over my vehicle and myself in it. So I'm very blessed with their response time, how they got me out of the vehicle, how I was placed and when I got to the hospital and such. We have to consider lives. Forget the money because I don't believe that making a mess of Southwest Tenth is gonna help us. If you have to consider all the residents on the side streets, think of Publix, the warehouse. Think of their transportation, going back and forth and all their supplies and all their dangerous supplies. Think about the train stations, the way this is gonna affect it. So I think that we should really consider and do the same thing that Boca Raton did, booted it out. Thank you and I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public?
Gwen Clark, Reed, fourteen-thirty, Southwest Sixth Way, Deerfield Beach. This whole thing about Tenth Street, Commissioner Drosky, when I was on the commission, nineteen ninety-four, ninety-five, when Commissioner Trent Chitella was sitting up here. This has been going on ever since then. And there has been no resolution. Every time we think that there's gonna, yeah, it's coming right now. This is what they decided, this is what they're gonna do. And it got stopped. In my opinion, I don't see anything happening with this anytime soon. There's too much back and forth. There are too many people undecided. The money has been sitting there. It comes, it goes, it comes, it goes. And once things, they decide to make a change, I think the MPO plays a big part in this. And I think that we really need to have this open discussion. I'm sure there are more people and I just wanna know, it's the workshop. Is the public gonna be able to attend? And will they be able to be heard again on this?
Of course.
Okay, so thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public? I'm gonna close it to the public. District one?
Like to go home.
District two? I'm sorry, I can't hear you. District three?
No comment tonight.
District four?
Pardon me, I have a couple items. Thank you. District four, before, I believe, our next meeting will be March second, which is the sip and stroll at Constitution Park from six to nine o'clock PM. It was a sold-out event last year. I understand that ticket sales are very brisk again this year. So if you don't have your tickets, please come out. It was a fabulous event that we had last year. Second, I would like to thank city staff again for a great Pioneer Days weekend. I cannot really stress that enough because I honestly did not know what kinda turnout we were gonna get for the parade. It exceeded all of my expectations and then some. The beach was packed all day Saturday, all day Sunday, Saturday night. In fact, I thought the fireworks for Saturday night was better than the Fourth of July. I really, I really did. I thought it was a great event. So to the city manager and your staff, please, you know, pass along, you know, especially my, you know, thoughts that it was an event that was very well-prepared and planned out. And to me, it was, it went exceedingly well. And I think we, you know, promoted our city extremely well, not only to our residents, but to our visitors. And that's why I was so in favor of the Italian festival as well because I think that is only going to further spread the reputation of Deerfield Beach. I had the opportunity recently to meet a freshman commissioner from Pompano Beach, Andrea McGee. And I'm a sophomore, you know, commissioner here in Deerfield Beach. And we really, you know, the two of us, you know, really didn't know each other's cities that well. She couldn't name, you know, all the members of my commission. And I got most of hers, but I couldn't name all of them. They're a six-person commission in Deerfield Beach. So I, after the, in Pompano, yes. And I was thinking afterwards, you know, they're our neighbors to the south and there's all this information that maybe we can share with one another. So I just throw it out for thought tonight. You know, I don't expect any answers, but think about it and maybe I'll bring it up at the next commission meeting is, why don't we have like a joint workshop with their commission? You know, we can do one in their city, we can do one in our city. We have our technology center just right up the road from here that can accommodate their commission and the public. And just kinda brainstorm what issues, you know, they have that we have that are in common that we can unite on or at least just share information back and forth. I know County Commissioner Lamar Fisher has a mayor's conference. I know the mayor of Broward County, Mark Bogan. I think he has one as well. And I think those are great information-sharing sessions. But if we can do it on a city-to-city with our neighbor right next to us, I think that would be very beneficial. I mean, how many of you have had contact with officials from the city of Boca Raton? I mean, I don't think I have maybe ever talked to the city of Boca Raton. And they're just our neighbor to the north. I think we have more in common with Pompano Beach to the south. So I think that's just an idea to consider.